Madam Mayor, it is five o'clock and we are live.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. Good evening, everyone. Welcome. It's going to be April 16th, special work. Well, a work session, a work session regarding the pay plan to the city of Lake Worth. Do we have, let's have a roll call, please.
Mayor Betty Rush.
Here.
Vice Mayor Christopher McVoy.
Here.
Commissioner Sarah Maliga.
President.
Commissioner Mimi May.
President.
Commissioner Ronaldo Diaz.
Here. Thank you very much. The Pledge of Allegiance will be read by Vice Mayor, Ms. Boyd.
(Inaudible) United States of America, into the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Yeah, I read that. I'm going to do.
I, we, you pledge a lot. Okay, so I've been a pledge allegiance so much in my life, that's confused. So I'm going to turn over staff. This is something, a presentation that's being made. Take it away. Let me be answered.
Why not? This is your show.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay.
I had to speak right into a stereo.
Okay. Usually I have a thing now that people don't want to talk about.
We're only asking you to speak.
We're only asking you to speak. Speak, you know, that's. Hi, I'm just kidding. I am Lauren Slayden. I'm the Director of Human Resources. We have worked for years on trying to update the pay plan. I was hired in 2016 to do a copy class study. That's when I first met Katie. We did another one, I think, a few years later. This is our fourth time, for I'm sorry, short, of producing these stats, and then nothing's ever done with it. So I'm hoping that this is the year. Now, obviously, before we do this, we need data. So Katie has been around for, I won't say forever, because that's not very nice to say, but she's extremely knowledgeable. She works in Palm Beach County. She works for a lot of local municipalities, so she's familiar with the compensation trends. I've seen everyone's been reading about. My back? Okay. So I don't think that I need to give to a long introduction. If there's any questions, of course, I'm available. And if even tonight, if you sleep on anything, please come to me with questions. I'd love to answer them at any time. I know that there's lots of going on. And just, long pleasure. Here is Katie Bush.
Thank you.
Thank you. You're nice. Welcome.
Thank you so much. Double checking that you can hear me, okay? I will try to do my best to continue to speak into the microphone as requested. Thank you so much for your time this evening. I wanted an opportunity to share with you not only information about HR compensation consultants. We refer to ourselves as HR CC for short, but also the process that we'll be going through to collect the data, as Lauren pointed out, and to let you know that I will see you again in July at your second budget location. So I wanted to lay a foundation today and answer any questions that you have, going narrowly. As Lauren said, I'm going to get the questions that come up for you to be able to reach out to her, and we can get your questions in. And then again, I'll see you in a minute. I have been around for almost forever. I grew up in Palm Beach County and started my career in pay plan design for cities, counties, and state agencies across the United States, though the majority of our work was in South Florida. So after being in consulting for seven years for different consulting firms that designed pay plans, I decided to go work for the private sector, actually work for a company that did mergers and acquisitions, which was a lot of fun. And then when I decided to start my own business, I decided to come back home. So I called my mom. We live in Delray, and I asked her if I could move back home because I wanted to start my own business. And I wanted the opportunity to not only work for local government, but also for nonprofits and also for private sector companies. So we do a lot of work in South Florida, a lot of work for your neighbors, and, as Lauren pointed out, we've had the opportunity to do a lot of work for you over the years for the city of Lake Worth. And I want to walk you through the typical parts or phases of a pay plan. I'll pause and open it up for questions as well.
Will we get a copy of this printout? It's really much, we have it to fold later. I mean, not right now, but.
So, when you see on the screen that it says updating your job and pay framework, the reason that we're referring to updating it versus creating it is that over the last several years, we've been maintaining the structure or assisting the HR director with maintaining the structure. So the foundation is first understanding your jobs and the kind of work that is performed. And you can actually see that in number four, where it says confirm your job framework. So making sure that your job descriptions are up to date and that they're ordered correctly is something that your HR department does using our methodology over the course of the last five or six years. Then, making sure that we understand what's happening in this labor market today, which I'm going to share with you and some things that I'm sure you've been hearing about. But we want to analyze the labor market data and then develop a pay plan. And basically, the plan is a set of pay ranges, minimum, midpoint, and maximum. It's like a list of jobs. And what that does is give managers really good guidance when they're making pay decisions. So you can ensure that they are being consistent because they're referring to the same set of guidelines. They're asking the same set of questions. Now, the answers may be different depending on whether or not they're promoting someone or hiring someone new, but they're going through the same process. When we put those two pieces together, the pay plan, we then have to analyze employee pay. And that's the part where, as Lauren referred to earlier, that we've gotten to that stage several times. And as you can imagine, it's quite an investment. And so one of the things that we're hoping is that by you understanding the process and what your options are, that when it comes time to make those important decisions relative to budgeting, that you'll be able to weigh the pros and cons and the investment needed to have an up-to-date structure. So that's part of the reason why I want to come back to you in July and share with you what our results are. Now, this process takes time. We actually started it back in March, looking through the job descriptions, organization charts. As you can imagine, things have changed with the organization over time. So we want to make sure that we understand where you are today, research the labor market, which we're in the process of doing today, develop that new framework, put the pieces together, analyze employee pay, recommend different implementation strategies to staff so that they can evaluate, again, through the budget process, to bring to you recommendations on different options that you have. And so we'll come back to you in July, but the implementation, of course, wouldn't actually happen typically until October. That's typically when the new pay plan becomes in place. Exactly. So, do you guys remember the Rubik's Cube? Okay. So, you know, every time you turn and you think you get a set of colors on one side, you have to take a look around the other side to see what the colors look like, right? If you're trying to solve the cube. Same kind of concept when you're doing a pay plan. You've got internal equity, so that's internal job alignment. You want to make sure that when employees look at the job that they're into in today, that they can see in their job list potential for jobs that they can move into, add more value, right, in the future. So that's the internal equity. Then you have the external competitiveness. This one's a little more tricky because now you've got, you know, with the internet, right, people are looking at two job ads, and they have a choice when they leave their driveway. They can go to the right and go to this organization, or they could go to the left, and they can come to Lake Worth. So we're competing from an external perspective, and we want to make sure that we're competitive. But at the same time, we have to be fiercely responsible. Where's the finance director?
No hiding.
I always say that one for him. No, it's true, right? So you've got to be fiercely responsible. So you want to make sure that your starting rates are high enough to attract people, but you don't want your maximum pay to be too pay, too high. So you don't want to overpay people. So you've got to find that balance. And you need to make sure that this foundation is maintained, that it's used for budgeting purposes, and that it's explained well, not only for your directors to be able to use that information when they're making pay decisions, but also so that employees know, there is a plan. It is up to date. It does make sense. It wasn't made up. It was done in a holistic fashion, right? Every job has been evaluated. Every job has been looked at. And I think that's really important for them to know that the plan is in place and there's a really strong foundation. So what's happening inside and outside? There's a lot of things going on in the labor market, and they have been for quite a while. So I know everyone talks about COVID, but if we could just go back a year or two before that, do you guys remember that in 2019, we had the Great Recession? I mean, I almost put it out of my mind, right? Eighteen months worth of economic, you know, discourse, if you will. So we've had all of these interrupters. So we finally got through the Great Recession, and then boom, March 2020, COVID hit, right? And so another disruptor in the market. Then, as things turned around, we had people coming back to work, which we thought, right? And then on top of that, the year later, in 2022, we had the Great Resignation. Remember hearing about all of that in the market? So I'm a data person, so I like to look at the numbers, and I like to look at how the fluctuations of different sectors of employment were impacted. And so you saw, like, in 2019, the number of public sector employees go down. Now, I think the work went away.
I was just wondering.
Right? The work didn't go away. Citizens' expectations didn't go down, right? Just the number of people available to do the work. Then you have the pandemic, and we sort of do this a little bit for a while. And then 2021 rolls around. Now we've got people coming back to work. And so all of these changes have caused a lot of impact to our ability as an organization to make pay decisions. So we've got a lot of volatility. We also have, at the same time, which isn't necessarily a bad thing, minimum wage. Do you remember the state of Florida decided to pass a higher minimum wage? And they gave us time. They said by the time 2026, September 2026 rolls around, everybody should be at a minimum paying $15 an hour. Well, many large employers started to raise their rates way before, actually, they started in 2014, if you look at the data, but they started way before that state of Florida rate, said that we need to raise our minimum wage. So thank goodness you actually did raise your starting rate to $15 an hour back in 2021. So you got ahead of the curve, which is definitely a good sign. But we've got pressure on minimum wage going up. We have unemployment, right, which is really, really low, but we have a lot of job openings. So the people that we're looking for to come and work here to fill the job openings, where are they? Everybody asks that. Where are they? Well, they're, they're actually working elsewhere. So what happens then if someone wants to leave their current employer to come work here, what are they going to want? More money, right, than where they are working today. There are other factors, of course. We can't, you know, deny that living, right? We don't always have the work-from-home option, right, because this is where we work. But there are all, many other factors, but the primary one often is compensation. So when they're applying for a job here and they're looking at the ad, we want to make sure that our pay ranges, I say our, like I work here, by the way, this your, the city of Lake Worth, pay ranges are market competitive, at least in the middle, right, at least in the ballpark. So that's what we're trying to do, so that, again, having this foundation, having not only the pay plan itself, but also level-setting employee pay and having compensation administration guidelines gives HR and directors the tools that they need to make those great pay decisions, even the law is difficult in the labor market. Questions so far? Good to keep going. Okay, so.
Because it is really related to what you just said, and I think you highlighted something that's really important, like the closeness of, of the office. And so that really kind of reminds me of something that I'm really curious if you can either talk about it down in the presentation, you might already have it, but I guess the question is, can you put like a particular evaluation on things that are not necessarily payable, but might be some, because obviously payable is the important thing that people are going to choose. But then there are other, like, really expensive things that, you know, like childcare, maybe mental health care, transit to the office, those sort of things that maybe we as a municipality with a smaller investment can have a bigger valuation, like maybe providing vouchers for childcare, that sort of thing.
So it's interesting. You're right. I did cover it a little bit in a few slides, and I think you're, you're hitting the nail on the head, which is, this is a very important piece of the foundation, but you have to take a holistic view. And so that, that's the key. That's the trend. But without this piece, one of the things we have to remember is when someone looks at the city from the outside, they're looking at the numbers, they're looking at the pay, and they might go through the list of benefits. And they might just, in their mind, they're just going to check, 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 right? Yep, okay, they're good. And so we want to make sure that the ranges are at least generally competitive, not the highest, lowest. It's going to fluctuate, of course, on, on a job, but at least in the ballpark, so we can spark their interest, so they can go and apply for the job and find out all the other wonderful reasons to work here.
Mr. McVoy, then, please.
One of the questions, one of the questions that I come to mind for me is, are job descriptions across all municipalities absolutely standard? Or how do you compare what one person calls job X and describes it, and somebody else does different? How do you make sure it's not close?
Vice Mayor, if they were standard, my job would be so much easier, even almost, in fact, I just had this conversation with a property appraiser. You would think they're, you know, in a very focused business, and that the job descriptions would be extremely similar, and that staffing would be the same. But even in something as focused as that kind of business, in the particular, I won't tell you exactly where I was talking to, but I will tell you that they have a lot of land, open land, and so they have a lot of agricultural and land appraisers. We don't. So we don't even have that job. And so if you look from city to city, you would think we're all in the same business, but the staffing is different. So we literally have to do it the old-fashioned way. We have to read every job description. Now, we're lucky that many of the organizations in Palm Beach County, we have already done a general evaluation of their jobs. So we have an idea of what market matches are good ones to make, but not for every position.
Thank you. It's lovely. Thank you, Madam Mayor. My question is, one of the biggest positions we need to hire for soon is the city manager. And I'm just wondering if, in this conversation, one of the things that I think that hinders us with certain positions is the living in the city requirement. And I don't know if you have this in your repertoire of what you're going to look into, but I would like your advice on, I think we're a long antiquated in asking the city manager to live in seven square miles, and, and we have a smaller pool to pull from. And this is something that we're going to be doing quickly and going out to bid. So I would love to hear your input on removing that as a barrier to get good quality candidates to consider Lake Worth Beach.
The two things, the city manager compensation package as a whole, and all of the different elements besides pay, contracts, specifics, and all of that, are not included in the scope of our work. However, I will tell you from an observation perspective, I have been seeing living within the city limits strongly preferred, whereas in the past, it would be required.
Okay.
And, and it's not just for the city manager position. I actually spoke to a fire chief who was exactly one hour and 30 minutes from his city that he was working in, and that was their requirement. And I said, because according, according to their staffing, the fire chief must show up within an hour and 30 minutes. And so he literally lived an hour and 30 minutes outside. So it's, it's changing, the way the world of work is changing, and our requirements are changing, and it's not just for lower-level positions, it's for all, all up and down the spectrum. Ms. May.
Thank you. Thank you so much. I'm sorry. I had two questions. One, when you said you went back and you were looking at the position, are the power position descriptions up to date?
We updated your descriptions a few years ago, and they have been maintained by the HR department on a regular basis. So every time they fill a position, someone leaves, and they need either a replacement or a new position, they evaluate those jobs using the same methodology and follow the same process for the job description creation. So, I won't speak for you, but I think that's what you do.
Yeah, that is. The other part, and then is kind of thinking back on that, when you went through or when you're going to go through, are you going to look at, do we have the right number of jobs per department, or are we heavy, are we excess, do we have not enough? Are you going to look at that, too?
Unfortunately, no. So that, what you've described is beyond the scope of this particular study. That's actually a staffing study and is often better done department by department, rather than holistically throughout the city, though I have seen it really done kind of on a rolling basis. I think one of the advantages, though, is that your HR department, again, because, and I just want to show you some statistics if I could, I'm going to have to walk over there and get a little closer so I can see. I'm not going to be trying to take my microphone.
Set it on the dome.
Okay, yeah.
Well, you get to, can I just finish one more, one more question? Yes. Turn my light off and stuff. Regarding the city manager, is it, is, any other things have you done where it would be, you get paid more, if you do live here, or you get paid per how far away you live?
I have not seen that.
You have not seen that. Okay, thank you.
A good question. Yeah. Okay. So one of the things that's really important that your HR department does a really good job of is they keep track of statistics. And so not only does it help from the budgeting perspective, but also from just like managing how pay is managed overall when you have this much fluctuation. So just to kind of walk you through this, I don't think I have a pointer, but on the left-hand side, 2021, 22, 23, and so far here now, 24. So this is the number of funded positions, full-time and part-time. So this is like something you would see in your budget. And the number of headcount is like the number of employees, the actual people. And so when you look at the difference between the two, that open jobs to fill is like what the Human Resources Department is doing in terms of recruiting. So think about how many pay decisions they need to make on an average basis. So you've got, what, trying to fill between 40 to 50 jobs a year? So that's four new hires a month. So every time you go to make a pay decision about a new hire, they need to evaluate what you're currently paying people. They need to assess the labor market. And so they're going through this process over and over and over and over again. So in the chart over on the right-hand side or the graph, that's your turnover. Now, it's broken into the purple and the blue. So the blue is involuntary turnover. I always have to remember, what does that mean, voluntary? So it basically means we're not a good fit. The employee and.
Really simple, right?
Yes. Has to be outstanding in the first line. So that's normal, right, in any organization, and that has been running steady over the years. The purple, remember how I was talking about the Great Resignation and people returning back to work? So that long purple bar is 2022. And that makes a lot of sense. A lot of organizations were feeling that because people were coming back to work. They were saying, oh, this isn't a good fit for me. I need to go, right? So we expected a lot of turnover there, and we are seeing a cooling off in the market. That's in air quotes for sure, because I'm going to show you another slide, too, that is, things are looking up, but let's not get too excited yet.
So were we kind of with the national trend in 2022, a lot, I mean, that was a high number, but it was a high number for everyone?
Yes. Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely.
That is better than that.
Yeah. Well, and I think, you know, after being at home, people were trying to figure out what was working. And then also you were having other employers poach.
Yep.
And so when they poach, can't always compete with that, because then they're offering something that's way out of or outside the norm. And so you don't, you know, necessarily want to address every single one of those, right, or try to compete. So we've got this 40 to 50 jobs. We're looking for four new hires a month, but then we've got our voluntary turnover on top of it. So now we're looking about, what, for five more people? So now, yeah, so now you say five to 10 pay decisions every month. Well, if you're going to, there's a normal process you have to go through, of course, to make those pay decisions, but having an up-to-date pay plan and a foundation makes one of those steps way easier, right, much more efficient, and allows people to be more responsive. And what we've been finding in terms of the the, I don't know, the, the, your, labor market, is that people are making a decision to move, and often, if that decision takes more than 30 days, they're going some places. So we do still want to make sure, right, that we are in the market, we can make fast, good decisions on hiring people, and having that pay plan as a foundation is one of those steps that'll make it more easier. So the other thing we do always is to figure out what's going on with you guys in terms of your contracts. So your contracts are in place right now, IBW, PU, PMSA, until 9:30, 2024. Your non-bargaining employees, they generally follow the PU, PMSA contract. So you have been doing annual cost of living adjustments, which is a good, so you, like, if you, you could pay yourself on the back or whatever and say, okay, at least we're doing something. In terms of the pay plan, the ranges themselves may not be market-competitive, but you have been at least making strides to keeping employee pay up to date. Does that number 3% look familiar? Okay, remember that number. Because when we develop a pay structure, and I'm going to talk about that at the outside labor market in a minute, but when we develop a pay framework, we want to make sure we understand your compensation philosophy. As I said, I, we always start with being in the middle of the market. We have some clients that want to pay at the top end of the market. They want to pay at the 75th percentile. Okay, that's for them. We have others that want to pay in the middle, maybe a little less if, going back to your point about, they have something that's extraordinary in terms of their benefits package, or where they're located, or some kind of discount or benefit that is perceived to be valuable by all. Key words, valuable by all. Exactly. So we have seen that in terms of compensation philosophy. Pay data points, we always start with the number in the middle, the pay arrangement point. We use that to develop a structure, minimum, midpoint, maximum, provides you guidance, ideally midpoint for budgeting, hiring people between the minimum and the midpoint. That's what that range stands for. And really, ultimately, we want to make sure people know we have a plan. Here's what the plan is. This is the plan we follow, and this is how we make pay decisions. So start going back to your point about the base pay, benefits, recognition, paid time off. We want to make sure that the city of Lake Worth has all of the things that are in the labor market that are perceived to be of value, right, when it comes to benefits. The challenge is, that value that people place on their benefits is very individualized, and a lot of it has to do with their own experience with benefits, their utilization, their understanding. Their utilization, their understanding of what the benefits are, number one, how to use them. And number two, what that value is. So for younger folks typically, until they break their legs skiing and end up in the hospital, they will understand the true value of the benefits that their employer offered them. Right, the ride to the hospital, the surgery, the time that they stayed in the hospital, the physical therapy afterwards, all of that adds up. Until you start getting those bills in the mail, you don't really realize like, oh, wow. If I didn't have benefits, that would have been out of my pocket, right? And even then, you have some folks who are further along in their career, maybe a little older, but their utilization is relatively low. Or they're covered under someone else's plan. So we have all these different factors, right, that come into play for the value of benefits that are very difficult to understand with each individual person who's reading our ad, how they value what we have to offer. So the first thing we need to do is we need to help them. And we need, I mean, not in a polite way, we need to make sure that our pay ranges are market competitive enough that they will consider the city of Lake Worth Beach as an employer. Because once they get here, they see where we're located, they see what we have to offer, then we can start having individualized conversations. Then we can talk to them about the whole package, right? But if they're not applying, because they're looking at our pay rates, we don't even get the opportunity to talk to them.
Question.
Yes.
Would there be a chance, like, if somebody doesn't really need healthcare, um health insurance, but they could use something as it could, we have sort of like a a little one from Calumet, one from what, we have benefits that they would choose from that would tailor to them a little bit more, just a thought. But I see what it's coming out.
It is possible, it's also very expensive. So we're actually looking at our benefits now. We're uh looking, if we've been lucky enough the past three years to have this zero percent increase, I don't see that happening again.
You mean with the health insurance?
Healthcare, yeah. So if we want to look at maybe letting them have a voucher or something in place of that, we can look at, we can look at economic costs, absolutely.
Right, just, again, what she's saying is like, let's have something besides pay to offer to people.
Yes, because our benefits are better than people give us credit for.
No doubt.
They are.
People don't give me credit for anything. It's a low bar.
I was actually, I was actually gonna ask. I was gonna ask the same thing, because it's frustrating if you get hired for a job and you don't need the benefits. And part of me thinks you should get more money, because, you know, you might get the benefits, and you're probably getting paid more. So something to think about.
So many options when it comes to your benefit strategy, and I know you start early. I know she starts early in strategizing what the options are and then the associated costs of them. It's a holistic, holistic approach. But we have to make sure that the one piece that we know they're looking at immediately.
Is a balance, right?
Exactly, yeah. And again, we're not going to be the highest, but we've got to be in the world. Thank you. Okay. I like chart. So you remember that uh three percent, so we're gonna talk about that. Now I'm gonna come stand over here by you.
And look at, through your mind.
Thank you. Okay, so we do a lot of work with um public sector and private sector. And so this chart um actually shows private industry in the red and then government in the blue. Because often, one of the things that our private sector, or I'm sorry, public sector organizations will say is, do we really compete with the private sector? And I'm like, yeah, you do. You need to know what's being paid, okay? You need to, and I'm not saying that you need to pay that, right? Um, you certainly aren't offering bonuses or incentives to majority of your employees, like many private sector organizations are. But to ignore them completely, I don't think is prudent. So we just want to know, right? So in our study, we'll actually include um that information. So remember how I told you before cooling off is happening? So it's, so like, we can actually see it in the numbers that the trend is coming down. So what you're seeing here is the change in wages. So when what people are getting paid um between two thousand, I want to say six, right, and twenty twenty-three, obviously, you see the fluctuation, see that arrow down there at the bottom right? Where that line goes up, that's COVID. So of course, we expected um a drop. Then we expected a spike when we all returned to work. And you can see that the private industry, they hit their peak in about June of twenty twenty-two. So that's the highest red little peak there. That was at five point five percent. Change in wages year over year, five point five percent. Remember, you've been budgeting three, okay? Which, by the way, is quite common for a long time. It's a fine answer. And it's running from the ring. So but you see the blue, right, the blue line um where that's the government, right? Um, and that again is also state and um and local government, so it does include, this is national data, by the way. So we're looking at, you know, again, very big macro picture. That spike was in June of twenty twenty-three. So the numbers are coming down, so things are cooling. That is, that is true. That is a true statement. But look what they're cooling to. They're cooling to four point one percent for private, four point six percent as of December twenty twenty-three. So we would hope if that trend continued, that those numbers, at least for um the government, would come down to, let's say, I don't know, first of all, four point five, four point four, four point three. So from a budgeting perspective, we want to make sure that we have enough money in the budget to keep up with actual changes in pay. Because when people are applying for jobs, because our unemployment is so low and our job openings are so high, where are they? They're already at work, right? So they've been getting these increases from these other employers. So we need to make sure that we're in the ballpark. This just came out. Oh, I love this. Floridajobs.org has wonderful economic data about our workforce and everything that's going on in the state of Florida. And one of the things it said, West Palm Beach, that we have had in February of twenty twenty-four, the biggest spike of um open jobs and new jobs. And guess where they are? The public sector. I was like, oh, boy, okay. Yeah, government-industry sector of all the different um metro areas in West Palm Beach in Florida. So what that says is we've got to keep an eye on what's happening out there. And so not only are you keeping your metrics inside to watch what's happening with pay, but we also have to keep our um eye on our neighbors and our friends. So um our friends and neighbors here now are getting a little local. These are the organizations that we have been tracking over the last seven to eight years in terms of what they're doing, not only um when they develop a new pay plan, like the city of Delray Beach is in the middle of um Lantana, getting ready to implement new ranges. I know this because I'm helping them. So they're a client of H R C C. Um, Green Acres has a really great pay plan. Also helped them develop that a couple of years ago. So this goes back to Vice Mayor, when you were saying about how do you know when the jobs are leveled or described? So for some of these organizations, because they are former clients, we know that they have things well organized, and they have these great foundations. Certainly for the utilities positions, it makes sense to look for where their options are. And so we look at the Florida Keys, for Pierce Homestead, and then um the FMPA puts out a survey, gives us a really good broad picture of what's being paid in the private sector. We have to know. It's a data point. It's not weighted. It's just what's being paid for similar positions. Ms. Malia, Ms. Malia.
Thank you. Um, because you brought up utilities, one thing I know is it's the dollar amount that usually attracts people, right? Um, when you are looking at this data and what you're going to present to us, does this factor in any education and certifications that we pay for as part of a benefit to them? Because some places you have to have those certifications to even get your application in. I know that we have, you know, we have programs where people can come in through code, through water department, electric utility, to get their certifications, and that is a benefit.
So typically, where that ends up showing up is in um training positions. So where the training position for that job, um how do you price that position while they are um learning on the job, gaining the education and the certifications to then be able to um to move up?
Where would you, where would you put, though, the dollar figure for, let's say, a certification for fifteen hundred dollars and the city's paying for that?
And so that actually goes over into the benefits bucket. Um, but where we capture it indirectly in compensation is that the pay that they're being offered while they're learning the job and not credentialed yet to do the job would be um much lower than someone who's credentialed to do the position.
Do you recommend contracts when we do stuff like that to make sure those that we've captured them, we've paid for, and now they're here for a year, two years, six months, whatever?
In fact, your your education program may already contain some of what we refer to as um a clawback.
Okay.
Um, but I don't have that memorized off the top of my head. But yeah, we've seen that. It's quite common.
Mr. McBoy? Mr. McBoy.
In informally, in talking particularly with the electric utility employees, I would say that again, informal, or at least statistical, but uh I've talked to him for a number of Other factors do play a pretty big role for our electric utility, at least for the line. Um, they're willing to do a little bit less because they like the small town deal. They like that they have the opportunity to get to know a lot of the residents. And many of them have long-term relations with helping out somebody who's eighty and kind of just needs somebody to talk to a little while, and if you're at the end of your shift, you've got a few moments to stop there and say hi. That sort of stuff is going to be very hard to fit into this.
It is.
And but I don't think it's irrelevant either. And the the concern that is floating in the back of my head, and it's already been for a while, in discussions with our city managers, if I had to put money on it, you're going to come back and say we're a little bit lower, or maybe a fair amount lower than a lot of other municipal. I don't think we're going to be all over in shocks. Oh, no, but referrals. That's, and so obviously, we would like to, and you've made a good case, the first thing people are going to do is what's the pay? I don't think we can win that back. Because we don't have the finances necessarily to get every job competitive. So we're going to have to be a lot more imaginative and being aware of what are those other things that employees do value. It it may not be, if you're working in sanitation on a on a garbage truck, yeah, that may or may not, you're pretty much looking at pay gap. Some of the other jobs, if you're working in the water utility, maybe working in the electric, there may be, the intent of those may be pretty significant factors. And my only, you know, request to my colleagues and to you is let's be putting quite a bit of effort, not just in the quantifiable parts of the pay group. That's pretty easy to quantify, and the other stuff is much harder. But given in the back of our mind that we probably won't have the money to be able to come up to those. And we kind of know that already. I think I see the financial spectrum, or the city manager. So let's make sure we do this, but let's also make sure that there's some sort of parallel effort that we're trying to get a handle on. What are our other leverage points? Because we're probably going to need to use them.
Yeah. Two points if I can piggyback. So one is the structure. And it's it's more about what to pay for work or the job than it is the job holder, which is the second piece. So the first part is the work. And we want to make sure that you put in a pay structure that is market competitive to a level that you're familiar with that balances the intrinsic value and all of the other benefits that you have at the city of Lake Worth Beach. So there's a balance there. So while the goal is to be in the middle of the market, when you balance all of those other factors, maybe there's a way to get there over time. So that's from a structural perspective. Then you have the people paying. Now, remember, you have been giving three percent increases, so you have, it's not, it's not like they've been zero. So you, people's pay has been moving a little. And the longer that someone is with the organization, the more opportunity they have to understand all of the value. And that personalized or individual experience that they have, whether it be with benefits or the location or going to the beach or getting free parking. Or, you know, all of those other elements, the longer they're here, the more they understand. So it's not just awareness, but they move to understanding and then appreciation. So when they appreciate and they understand the value of what that means to them, the structure is still important, because you still need to be able to recruit people, right? And then what their people are getting paid within that, they have then more understanding. So there's a balance. And all I can tell you is that I, we can be incredibly creative and um understanding of the balance that's needed as you make those important decisions.
Mr. McBoy?
Thank you. It seems to me, one of the things that I've concerned, and one of the concerns that I've heard from my colleagues for a while is, oh, my gosh, we're doing a study, spending money on a study. And we started out this discussion this evening with the H R director mentioning that we've done four of these in the last, since I can't remember, fourteen or sixteen, but.
Started in twenty sixteen.
So what's that, eight years? So that's one about every two years. And not that I in any way, I'm a scientist. I love that. I like charts and data, and I like comparisons and all that stuff's good. But given that I'm very aware of our financial concerns, and I don't see those changing dramatically at any conceivable maybe, but I don't think they're going to go crazy. No, we're not going to win a lottery, this is it. My concern is, you know, bring it as a question when it comes. The work environment and how that work environment is perceived, I suspect, is also a very big part of people's employment decisions. And I would be willing to bet a lot of money that at least for certain parts of the city of employment, the word gets around so quickly. Oh, boy, you don't want to work at Lantana, that department over there, that's really a, they're, you know, they're just a mess. It's been a mess for a while. Or hopefully, you really want to work at Green Acres, they really have their stuff together, they value their employees, it's just a really friendly, positive place to work. That is something that we do have a lot of leverage, and it probably the return on investment to cost to create that work environment is probably less than the cost to raise the mid-paced. And so my concern to my colleagues is, let's make sure that as we're doing this, we have somebody who is in charge of making sure that we are really evaluating, how good is our work environment for each department, each sector of it? Is there room to make that better? Would that make a difference? Those are more difficult things to measure. One of my life philosophic things is don't be seduced by the ease of measurement. Also instrumentation measurement. So the the ease of measurement of something doesn't necessarily correlate with its importance. It may, and you hope that it does, but it's certainly not a necessary thing. So that's, that's my concern is, as we move forward, let's have a parallel effort that's looking at the things that we have more control and are potentially more in our financial.
Which is why it's very important for us, especially here for the commission, to consistently support our staff and to let them know how much we appreciate the work that they do.
Thank you. Yes. How are we doing? We're doing well. We're almost towards the end. I just wanted to also, again, going back to the data, just to again be aware of what is being offered to other um employers in the market. These are just some of the um increases that have been um awarded to some organizations. Not everyone knows on that prior list. Um, but there's often a cost of living adjustment. You can see those, the the COLA. Um, and in some cases merit, this goes back to an individual um performance piece. So sometimes organizations will offer those. So again, in terms of what people are getting paid, so the job. So again, in terms of what people are getting paid, so the job holders, that's another key piece to be aware of, right? To understand what's happening in the labor market. So ultimately, the end result is a list of job titles, like you see here, with a grade structure. That goes from what, one to six in this example, you have minimum pay, midpoint and maximum. So ideally, if we're starting with the middle of the market, we'll then, then be able to quantify how much that costs, what the investment is to implement that kind of plan.
Is this, is this us geared to the city or is this generic?
Example. So these are actually some of your job titles, but those are example pay ranges. Just an example. Um, but it is to give you an idea of, you know, what, how the pay structure works. So what happens in terms of how you're paying employees? We want to, from an implementation perspective, know what that investment is um, to move employee pay to the new pay ranges. That doesn't mean everybody's gonna get a raise. What that means is that some people's pay is less than the minimum or starting average rate of what others in the labor market are offering. And so from an investment perspective, that's where, um, when you see what the number is, right? You guys have the hard decision of balancing that with the budget. And as I said, we are extremely invested in helping you to have a pay plan that's gonna work for you. And so even if that means that, um, baby steps in terms of implementation, which is this year, we can't be at our desired market position, but we can be within ten percent.
And people will know that.
Yes.
People will hear that intent. Please may, and then Mr. Diaz.
Thank you. Um, so one of the things that I would be real careful about is raising the starting pay and not experience like. Cause you were just on a thing that says the CTA and I'm a teacher. And I make about the same as the first year teacher and I'm twenty-six years in. And it's that can get very frustrating for employees. So I would definitely say to, um, to make sure we look out, look out for that.
There is actually an example on there as well, about one organization, they raised the, um, it's down there at the bottom, West Palm Beach. They first raised the minimums because they needed to be more competitive and then they raised the maximums. Now, part of that could have been that they had really wide pay ranges, because remember we want to balance, we don't wanna pay too much. So we wanna make sure that we're tracking the market in a way that we're in the middle, not only for our midpoint, but also for our minimum pay and our maximum pay.
But doing that. I encourage people to stay around and to seek growth and reward, you know, loyalty and, and, um, performance.
Mr. Diaz?
Right, I mean, that's why I think the minimums are so key, but I, I, for one, I'm looking forward to your July presentation. I think it's gonna be painful, like we kind of know what it, what it's gonna be in a way, but you know, at one point you have to rip off the band-aid, so you will, so to say. Um, to get us at least closer, I suspect it'll be a multi-year approach to get us where we really need to be. Um, but I do hope, and, and I think this was discussed by a few of us up here. One thing that I think would be great, and then, and even if we don't really know the answer, because I have looked into this on Board of Job, the annual state job, you can't really find this data and that's the stuff that you can't quantify, like I think Vice Mayor mentioned. Another big one I get anecdotally at least is, uh, workers who are twenty-somethings or thirty-somethings, they put an incredible amount of value on mental health care. And, which is just like, you know, the stigma's been released, you know, generations, and so they have a tremendous amount of value in that. Um, but you can't really like quantify that from my understanding, like you can't say, well, yeah, you know, this generation, this many people would, would want this kind of value and that kind of care. But I do hope that we get maybe some sort of hint or something that you can pull something up to describe that. Because I think us being creative, uh, it's gonna be things like that, I feel like, that we're gonna have a touch on for sure.
It's definitely a multi-pronged approach. I think having that foundation of the, the pay ranges that you can use that reflect the market at a rate that you're comfortable with. And then also listing all of those other benefits and describing them and helping people to move from awareness of what the benefits are to understanding the benefits and how they apply to them and how they can be used. And then ultimately, the holy grail is valuing, right? Is appreciating what those benefits are.
Right.
And it's such a process.
Yeah. Right, and that, that valuation, I think, hoping is not too difficult to calculate on certain things, because you know, another example that I've gotten a response from anecdotally, of course, we could use, I think, a solid survey, things like childcare vouchers, right? As a parent, you might spend a couple thousand dollars a month on childcare, but if we can provide kind of that same service in a voucher that costs us maybe, you know, a fraction of that, then that value to us is, it brings us closer to when we can meet the actual payable goals just yet. So I think, uh, with some research and creativity, we can, I think, do really well.
Um, just two things, I know my mental health is always better when I can pay my bills. I always feel a lot better, that's like a good start. Um, and then I think we would, you know, for anything like a program like that, we, I think it would behoove us to do a study within our employees is daycare, something that, I mean, people are old, people that may not need daycare, that sort of, or education like Sarah was talking about. But giving a range of, of possibilities, I think it must be nice. Thank you so much.
So I look forward to seeing you all in July. And we'll talk about budgeting for change, regular pay plan updates, your internal metrics that you're doing, communicating those pay administration guidelines and making sure that you're taking that holistic approach with that fabulous foundation. So until then, enjoy.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your time, I so appreciate it.
Appreciate, appreciate your work, I'm, I'm really glad, because I think all of us are committed to raising as much as we can the, the pay of our, of our employees and also the, you know, their feeling valued.
Yep, absolutely. Thank you. Thank you. Motion to adjourn.
A second. Mr. Diaz, all favor. Aye, thank you very much, we've got one minute.
Madam Mayor, do you wanna take a brief break?
Sure, let's take a brief break.
Yeah.
You said what they can answer long, long time. Safety use, that's a good sound of these. That was one we had initially, that was. We sat up there and we were gonna go there.
Be there.
Yeah, it was very, uh, what was that guy? Yeah, it was before Larry, it's like.
When, when are they starting again? It's coming from one of the mics.
Madam Mayor, it is six oh eight and we are still live.
Welcome back, everybody, and welcome to the April sixteenth, twenty twenty-four Regular City Commission Meeting. Revision three. I guess I should put it in there, um, thank you. Um, let's have the roll call for you.
Mayor Betty Rush.
Here.
Vice Mayor Christopher McBoy.
Here.
Commissioner Sarah Maliga.
Present.
Commissioner Mimi May.
Here.
Commissioner Reynaldo Diaz.
Here.
Thank you very much, the invocation will be led, or moment of sounds will be led by Commissioner Maliga and I will be the pledge.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just ask that we all be kind with our words, soft with our actions and be a little lenient as people are going through trying times right now, we never know what we're suffering. What people are dealing with in their private lives. Be gracious, fold open the door, smile at a stranger, and let's just continue to make Lakewood Beach and the world a better place.
Amen. Okay, do we have any additions, deletions or reordering?
I have a question, Madam Mayor.
Sure.
In regards to the lengthy amount of proclamations.
Yeah, I was gonna, I'm gonna put a question out to the audience. Um, we have a number of presentation, of, of proclamations tonight. And if some, I wanna, I need to know if someone's here to receive that. Uh, American Lineman Appreciation Day, is that someone here? Uh, American Lineman Appreciation Day, is that someone here from the guests? I see. Okay. Earth Day, is someone here to get the Earth Day proclamation?
Yes.
Yes?
I can take it.
But.
Excuse me.
Okay.
So yes.
Arbor Day?
Yes.
National Library Week, yes, okay. Nash. Where are you? Natural Volunteer Week? Anybody? Volunteers are going on. Uh, Nashville Dark Sky Night, okay. Your show? What?
If I, I could do Earth Day on behalf of the syrup.
Well, uh, okay. Well, all right, you'll. Um, National Dark Sky Month is this show again, uh, and Water Conservation Month, anybody here? Yeah, uh-huh, okay. And Water Professionals Month, I think we're gonna have a lot of proclamations tonight. Thanks for the effort. We tried, okay.
So, Madam Mayor, I, I believe none of the proclamations are moving to consent is what I gather.
You are correct, ma'am.
Okay, we have a speed readers.
Wait, wait, wait. National Volunteer Day is, um.
Uh, National Volunteer Week will move to consent?
Right.
And I just wanted to say that, um, Presentation B, the Fire Rescue, Fire Rescue Report. So Chief Geraldine was supposed to be here to introduce new Chief Craig Spiegelhalter, but she started her new position immediately and is not here. But, um, Chief Craig should be here and will introduce himself rather than Chief Geraldine introducing him.
Great, thank you. Although we all wanted to say adieu to Chief Geraldine tonight. She cheated us. Okay, thank you. Um, so presentate, presentate, so we have.
Sorry, Madam Mayor, we need a motion to approve.
I.
Motion to approve the transition.
Uh, second, second by Commissioner May, all favor. Aye. Thank you very much. Okay, first up, we have a presentation regarding the re- resurfacing restoration and rehabilitation project on State Road eighty, eight oh two Lake Avenue, certain group by Melissa Reading, community outreach specialist for the Coronado group. Coridina group. And there she is. And everybody wants to know that timeline. We are all hoping you say Sixth Avenue South will be open next week.
I'd love to say Sixth Avenue South is gonna be open except that's on our project.
Oh, just say it anyway. Give us some hope. We, I mean, our, our roads are really under assault right now.
Uh, uh, my name is Melissa Redling. Is it on now? There we go. My name is Melissa Redling. I'm the community outreach consultant for the active bridge and construction projects in Palm Beach County. I'm here, um, with my project manager for the State Road eight oh two, uh, Lake Lucerne project. Um, my project manager, Mike Miller, and my project administrator with the blaze. Uh, we're just giving an update as to where the project stands right now. We've already completed the, um, boring for stabilization, and we're now working on the major intersections for the ADA curb ramps. So there, I'm sure people have noticed that there have been corners that have been broken up and are being replaced. And, um, after that, we're going to be moving into, what's the next step?
Like.
Yeah, so we're currently working on the Cernat, then we'll be moving to Lake, finishing that up before we move into the resurfacing component.
Oh, okay. I'm curious, now I should probably answer the answers. And I look at our trees that were put in the wild. I mean, are you gonna be, the trees are staying, right? Nobody's taking away our trees, right?
No, that is correct. The trees are saying, um, we are doing some tree grade restoration.
Right.
Try to remove some of the trevelling habits of the trees.
Okay, great, thanks.
So that's basically. An update as to where we are and where we're heading, and we just like to answer any questions anyone might have about the project. Is there any concerns or comments?
Commissioner Malaga?
Is there a place where the residents who don't attend the meetings can keep up? Like, do you have an update website, or can you put something for our residents to be able to follow the project in the timeline?
Yes. Yes, of course. Um, we have a project website that can be found at www.d4fdot.com. I have brought some flyers.
Could you be slow and say?
Oh, yeah, I'm, I have some flyers here that have the, the links on it that I can, um, share with you and with everyone here we've brought.
And then Jamie, we can put that on the website.
Yeah, what I was gonna mention is we are, um, I, I basically have started to compile all of the DOT products. If you have a lot going on, um, not just right now, but in the coming years as well on our website. So someone will just be able to go to that page, and you'll basically see all DOT projects. And then the whole point is to link to these sites. So if you wanna see, um, your one, two, or three of like, say, the federal highway, um, DOT projects, you can click on that page, you can actually go and see exactly what the project numbers are, what the scope is and everything. So we are currently putting that together.
So that, because the citizens have been asking quite often, because we really feel like we're under assault from DOT right now. I had it said. And it's, it's all good in a few years. We'll all forget the pain. Um, but our folks are looking for like, you know, what's the project? What's the timeframe? Is there, are we, what you're talking about, Mr. Brown, is that gonna be something that somebody can look up at the website and go, okay, that's happening then, this is the timeframe, this is the expectation?
Yeah, the whole point is to basically have the, the scope on there and then be able to link directly to the actual project website itself. Because we do get a lot of questions, and there's a lot of confusion as to what project is what. Like the Lake and Lucerne project that she's here presenting on is different from the Traffic Circle project, which is also practically going on and moving west, which is also separate from.
And that you north or Sixth Avenue South, or?
Yes.
Wherever else they're doing stuff.
But keep in mind, years ago, we had.
I know, we're not, we're not.
So we've been asking for a long time.
We're not unappreciative of the work being done. We're just a little.
So, so yes, on the website, the, the point is to have all of this information available so the, the public can go and actually look and see what projects are.
That would be helpful.
So.
I remember when they did Dixie Highway years ago, and the bridge was closed across the canal for a, for a long time. Thank you.
My pleasure. Um, sir, any other questions that you might have?
Anybody? Seeing none, you've done a fabulous job. I see a light, Mr. Brown.
I did just wanna say to the, the public, if there are any questions as far as the scope or, um, schedule, stuff like that, you can always just contact the Public Works Office or the State Manager's Office, um, until we get this up on the site. So, um, we are here to answer questions, and I will be blocking you.
Cause you're going all the way to the beach, to someone all the way to the beach.
Yeah.
To the bridge.
To the bridge.
The bridge.
To the bridge.
Get a new bridge.
Catch that. I'll look into. Five. For sure.
That's a new bridge. We got the beautiful thing with the lights. I remember the old bridge. I remember the old bridge, right? Who remembers the old bridge? What is new? Yeah. So, but thank you. If you're doing everything else, you might as well give us a new bridge. I'll never notice.
You can just add that she's brought it.
Right, right, yeah. I'll buy out your team over here. Um, so I have brought extra flyers in case anyone in the audience needs it, and, um, like, contact information is listed on the flyer. So if anybody has any questions at any time, feel free to reach out to me directly.
Can we get this on the website?
I can send you.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Send you the file.
Thank you.
If you want, you can just leave them on that table and on people. They like to pick them up.
Sure.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Have a great night. Thank you very much. Next up, next up, we have, um, Palm Beach County Fire Rescue Report by Craig Spiegelhalter. Our new, our new district chief, and welcome aboard. Have you served in our city before?
Yes, I have.
I thought you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor.
Good evening.
Yes, I'm Craig Spiegelhalter. Or Matt, uh, some of the staff earlier this week, uh, Jerry was still in town. Um, yes, I am your new district chief. Um, I'm covering the Lakewood Beach area as well as the remainder of the geographical battalion, which is battalion three, which includes eight fire stations. Uh, my office is still across the street. I'm available Monday through Friday. If you need me. Um, I can be your direct point of contact as previous for fire rescue members. Um, I've been with Palm Beach County Fire Rescue for over twenty six years. Uh, about the last twelve, right here, next door, as your battalion chief for the last twelve years. There's three of us that rotate every third day. Uh, so this is home to me. Um, I've been in this profession for over thirty six years, so I know nothing but shit for it. And the day thing is a bit of an adjustment, but.
Oh, that's right.
Yeah. So it's a five day a week thing rather than a four day.
Weekends, you have weekends.
Yeah.
Do you get Kelly days?
No Kelly.
No Kelly day.
No Kelly day.
Ooh. Sad.
You obviously have paid attention to John.
You know my brother?
I do very well. Number.
Yeah, he's good.
But I'm glad to be here. Like I said, I call this place home. And, uh, if I can anything, don't let us think.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Congratulations.
Yes, thank you.
Then.
Uh, Geraldine did say something about an hour presentation, sort of chuckle, said, I think it's ten minutes. Uh, I did get you, uh, the, um, annual reports of fire rescue providers. They are a little late this year. Uh, we are short in our planning department, and then Charlie Printing had some new printers come in, and they had to repaint all the reports for the nineteen minutes of value because everybody's face and red specs. Uh, I got them today, but they are sent to you electronically. I believe it's supposed to take the time to review them. If you have any questions, we'll skim over just a few of the highlights of it. Um, as you're aware, Lakewood Beach is covered by two primary stations, uh, Station ninety one, right next door, and Station ninety three over on Detroit Street. Uh, for the fiscal year twenty three, a total of eight thousand six hundred and twenty calls. Uh, the largest percentage is here on Station ninety one, running almost fifty six hundred of those calls, and Station ninety three running approximately three thousand of those calls. And that's on page five of the report. Um, your average response time was five minutes and forty six seconds, which also includes forty five seconds of dispatch handling. That's the time that is in our dispatch center. A minute to a minute thirty of turnout time. That's the time it takes for the crews to hear the alert, move to the truck, put on the proper gear, and to get on the vehicle and start moving, which leaves you the remainder of about four minutes per travel time when you were in the city limits here. So that, that's a, an excellent average. Um, like I said, approximately eighty six hundred calls, uh, sixty eight hundred or so were those for medical calls, eight hundred and eighty three motor vehicle accidents, three hundred and seventy fire alarms, two hundred and fifty seven investigations, one hundred and twenty seven fires, uh, forty seven hazardous situations, uh, forty seven that we are classifying as MIH, uh, twelve water related incidents.
What do you do? What is MIH?
MIH is Mobile Integrated Health. We have a team of people.
Okay.
That come out.
Mental health.
Social workers, and we check on, uh, patients that the crews have had contact with that feel they need additional help, and they do a referral through our online system.
And I, I'm gonna break in. I have to tell you, a friend of mine who is mentally ill, um, there were many calls to her, to her place, and they came and followed up. I mean, I had her in a hospital, but I had time, but they came and asked until it was really terrific. And people don't know about that follow up, then you'll do.
Yes.
Yeah.
Very important. It's where it's experienced too. It's almost that care medicine, uh, where you're gonna see a lot of people being treated right there. So it's a program that's really taken on. Um, I believe Geraldine talked about it in twenty twenty three, this past year, we added another rescue truck to the fire station right here. That's due primarily to call volume. So that gives you a current daily staffing level of twelve personnel out of this fire station and six personnel out of Station ninety three. Like most fire rescue agencies, seventy five percent of your call volume is the MS calls. Um, some of the highlights or high points of the MS policy built here in Lakewood Beach that of the stroke type calls, people suffering strokes, it means fifty seven of those were immediately identified, uh, and alerted sent to the hospital. Those patients were transported to correct, similar to having the correct treatment within one hour of time, and they walked out.
I'm gonna speak up again. I'm just a fan of you. A couple of years ago, I had a pulmonary embolism. At home, and they were there so fast. They saved my life. They literally saved my life. So I have a great debt of gratitude to. Yeah, amazing.
Uh, one hundred and one trauma alerts. Those are victims who have suffered some type of significant trauma. They're transported to one of two trauma facilities in the county of the north south. And we had twenty six resuscitation awards, twenty six incidents where we handed out resuscitation awards. Meaning the crews have found a victim in cardiac arrest, meaning they weren't breathing, their heart had stopped, and they had resuscitated them, and that victim had walked out of the hospital. So that's pretty impressive.
They're so good.
But as firemen, you can relate with John, your brother, and it's all about fire for us, but, you know, it's not all we do. But, uh, as seen in, on page twenty five, within the city limits here, on your first alarm response, you get a total of ten units, which are twenty four personnel adding the building fire. I mean, they're, they're within typically that, that six minute or so timeframe. So that, that, that is, that's pretty, that's something to be proud of. In Lakewood Beach, as I stated, we responded to a hundred and twenty seven fires for the year. Um, of course, we always attempt to prevent fires, uh, through our fire inspection bureau, which is referenced on page thirty six. Our inspector was committed or completed over fifteen hundred fire inspections, both annual and, um, and green inspections. Uh, we updated our fire department key system. It's called a Knox box. Those are black boxes on commercial buildings. It has keys inside for the fire department to access the building, so we don't have to cut doors or break windows. With technology that was upgraded to a digital system, so all those cylinders had to be changed out. So we had exchanged four hundred and twenty two cylinders within the city, and now it works on a key fob like thing.
They're all commercial? Are those all?
Those are only commercial. Now, they do have them for residential, but it's a different type of box, but it is available. Um, our, our, um, inspection bureau completed two hundred and sixty four plan review and completed approximately two hundred and eighty five inspections in new construction locations. Um, in fiscal year twenty three, uh, we had hired on three different recruit classes, uh, which yielded eighty one new employees for fire rescue. Uh, these people come certified, but they have to go through a twelve to fourteen week reverse training program for them to be released into the field. And how much they're out in the field, they are put in probation for an entire year. Uh, currently, we, we are in our second class of the year, um, which will graduate next week. Um, but we are looking at approximately two hundred vacancies with the fire rescue. So, so, yes.
Yeah.
So those classes will be ongoing.
Huh.
Yes.
Is that a national, is that a national trend?
It is everywhere. Yeah. And we're very competitive. We're considered to be one of the best, which I'm gonna talk about, highlight a couple of those things. Um, you know, it was down south. Now Palm Beach County is the department one that works for, but as you know, through a number of new meetings, you're planning, which is getting real tough. People live in this area, you know, to survive, to have the ability. So a lot of them are even go for it. So we gotta remain competitive.
Yep.
Um. Uh. Something unique about, um, Lakewood Beach area and available resource, in twenty twenty three, we had moved our, uh, personal rescue water craft, or jet skis from the Jupiter area. Um, and expanded into the, into this area. They are stationed out of Station thirty seven, which is the land area, it's right down the road. It's an easier deployment for us to get out to the beach access. So we have two jet skis that are staffed every day. But looking to expand that program into a larger marine type unit. Um, so again, it's, you guys, we saw, we had twelve water related incidents, so they are a resource that's needed. And every fire engine within this geographical area is also, um, has a, what's called a paddle board or a rescue board on board. On the top, it looks like a pool vehicle, the surfboard, you're like, really? But that's how we have to store it because it's so big.
You're fair.
It allows us to get out and swim to these, these victims, uh, immediately before that, that water craft can be deployed.
Okay.
Um, I think Geraldine last year, her last update, gave you a video, showed all the great stuff we were doing, and that video did discuss that we were the first in Palm Beach County. We were the only in Palm Beach County. Um, on top of being one of very few agencies nationwide to deliver whole blood transfusions out of the field, uh, we've delivered over a hundred and eighty units of blood. So we are currently in the spotlight for research, for articles in, uh, data collection, because we are the leading edge on that. And certainly making a difference. And we give blood to victims who are suffering some type of significant trauma or somebody with a large, a large blood loss. And it's very, we've seen it in the military years and years and years ago, but it, it's not something anywhere else in the county that's doing it. It's something we're very proud of. On top of, um, on that resource, we, we also have a number of, um, advanced equipment. Um, we have a, a number of new cardiac monitors, a number of new, um, CPR devices, which gives a steady and consistent, um, compression rate. And our, our, that's what we say with our resuscitations of victims and people walking on the hospital. It's amazing. And our EMS captains, which are a single resource unit who carry the blood, they're also carrying ultrasound. So we can look at people's hearts, and we can look at their valves. And on page twenty of the book, you'll see a great little article with child that we resuscitated, um, who was finding cardiac arrest. And with the ultrasound, our EMS captain was able to see that the victim's heart was still beating, even though we could not feel a pulse. We performed CPR the entire time, and that young child was able to leave the hospital a day later. So that, that's.
Ground.
Yeah. So we are very proud of that technology that we have. Um, currently, fire rescues in the process of completing all the necessary steps to become the second, um, team in southeast Florida, uh, with the designation of a FluSAR team, which is, um, Florida Urban Search and Rescue. Um, the only team right now is down in the Miami area. We saw that on the building collapse a couple of years ago, so currently we rely on that, and it's a very lengthy process, and we're finishing that up right now to be the second team in the southeast. Um, in addition to that, daily, we have two teams of eleven people, uh, one of the nine. In addition to that, daily, we have two teams of eleven people, one in the north end, one centrally right down the street here of our special operations people who specialize in asthma response, technical rescue, defined space, events, extrication and those sorts of things. So that's an expansion of that team. So we're very proud of that. We put into service mid-March two brand new trauma helicopters in conjunction or partnership with the healthcare issue. I'm not an aircraft guy. If anybody is there, Leonardo helicopters, they're beautiful helicopters. They replace our two support D helicopters, which were over twenty-five years old. They arrived late last year, but they put hundreds of training hours of flight time on them. And they went into service in March. One and two is being, the old aircraft is being retired. The second one's being kept in the neighborhood as a backup. And so currently there are three available, but two are in service throughout the entire day. I was gonna skip over this depending on time. I don't want to use too much, but I heard in the last meeting, we talked about yourself, the importance of mental health. So what are we doing for our personnel? Every year, firefighters required to have an annual physical. Part of that physical now involves having a stress test every three years. There's no, in this answer box. But part of that annual physical now is they have to sit down with our behavioral health specialist people and they are put through a series of questions. Because PTSD is a big, is a huge problem. So that's something every employee has to go through now as part of their annual physical. This year, this past February marked our tenth anniversary partnering with the University of Miami Sylvester Cancer Center. Over ten years ago, they approached us, wanted to do some clinical research by doing some random blood work on us and answering some questions. Within that ten-year timeframe, they partnered with the firefighter safety coalition, a number of the local fire departments, and they created what is called the FACE team. FACE, F A C E, stands for firefighters attacking the cancer epidemic. I call it an epidemic because currently cancer is the leading cause of firefighter deaths. Now, it's very personal to me, as you may or may not have been aware, Geraldine had suffered something similar. I as well, back in twenty-seventeen, was diagnosed with stage four metastatic cancer. Eleven months of my life, I was away from work. I came back to work and sixteen months later, I was doing it all over again. And U M happened to be the only hospital that could operate only type of cancer. But through that research they're doing with us, we're trying to do all the right things. You know, it's a change in culture for us. Some of us could relate to the marble man being that cool rugged-looking guy. Well, the fewer a fireman, the dirtier you were, the more covered and sick you were, the better the firemen, which are finding that in case, it's stuff that is causing our cancers. It's things we're being exposed to when we go into a building. It's not a piece of wood burning anymore. It's stuff sticking to us. And through that, we gained a lot of research to know what we're actually taking home to our families. And that's a huge thing that we're trying to prevent from doing too. And so again, it was a very good thing for fire rescue this year.
This might be anecdotal, but the life expectancy, and John talks about this, he's very concerned about this. You know, after you retire, like how many years you can spend. It's not, it's not great. Firefighters bring home a lot of stuff. And it's funny because people go, you know, they only work every third day. Or as John said, you know, you'd be the first one to show up at an accident and pick up the pieces of the person that used to exist. So the BTS thing is huge.
Huge. We're getting better at it. You know, it's a change in culture. You know, I, I mentioned, I signed up for this thirty-six years ago. I have no regrets of what I'm doing at all, or any day I show up. I did retire last year on the drop program, but I still have every desire to go into work every day.
Well, welcome in your position and thank you so much.
So in closing, there are a number of things in that book. It's about forty pages worth of stuff. If you ever have any questions, just email me or call me directly. We could review it even further. But in closing, for fire rescue, we responded to over a hundred and forty thousand, hundred and fifty-four thousand emergencies last year within average response time of six minutes and fifty seconds. So where does, where does Lakewood Beach fit in? Well, as you heard, you, you are only eighty-six hundred of those calls. So the thing we're proud of is our average response time is one minute quicker than our average department life. Okay. And where does station ninety-one or station ninety-three, ninety-three fit into all that? That station across the street is the fifth busiest station in Palm Beach County. That rescue truck is the busiest rescue unit responding to over thirty-seven hundred calls a year. And now fire engine is the fifth busiest fire region in Palm Beach County. So if you're ever wondering what the men and women are doing next door, that's what they're doing. Even part of the service community. So.
Well, we thank you so much. Ms. Sherman?
I just have one quick question for you. As far as citizen cooperation, when you go out and for any sort of call, do you find that the citizens are cooperative, that they move out of your way, to get out of your way, or is that something that we would need to do more education about?
I don't think it's intentional. No, I think it's the day and age of what we've created. We have vehicles that are very, very well insulated, air tight. You have the day and age of really good sound systems in vehicles. So people don't hear you. Or they're just occupied with things they're not supposed to be doing, like texting or driving, talking on the phone. You know, so again, I, I don't think it's a huge problem here, but it is very frustrating in any area of the county of what we engage with there.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Really.
There, we're so lucky to have them. Okay, we've got some proclamations. All right. First up, we have a proclamation declaring April eighteenth as lineman appreciation day. I passed them out, so I don't have to read all of them. I think Ms. McQuaid has that.
Transmission.
Line.
Oh, it is.
You just put it at the bottom.
City of Lakewood Beach proclamation, whereas the city of Lakewood Beach's electric utility system provides services to over twenty-seven thousand homes and businesses and must be maintained and operation twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week and three hundred and sixty-five days a year during periods of rain, cold, heat, thunderstorms and hurricanes. And whereas the national system of electric transmission lines is kept in a high state of readiness and reliability by over a hundred and twenty thousand dedicated and skilled men and women collectively known as electric linemen and who are essential and valued employees at all electric utilities across the country. And whereas electric linemen are a cohesive group who must work safely in hazardous conditions while maintaining and restoring electric service to our homes and businesses. And who have chosen a career in the electric utility industry and have achieved certification as lineman after rigorous apprenticeship to perform a job that has been ranked as one of the ten most dangerous jobs in the country. And whereas the linemen of our own city of Lakewood Beach Electric Utility are dedicated and hardworking individuals who perform this task daily, this work daily to ensure the safety and the safe and reliable delivery of electric energy to our homes and businesses. Whereas it is most fitting and proper that the city of Lakewood Beach observes this special day to recognize Lakewood Beach hometown heroes are electric utility linemen. Now therefore, Betty Rash, Mayor of the City of Lakewood Beach, Florida, by virtue of the authority vested in her and on behalf of the city commission due hereby, do hereby proclaim April eighteenth, twenty twenty-four as Lineman Appreciation Day. In witness where she set her hand causes seal the city to be affixed as Rash Mayor.
Thank you. We have some representatives from the lineman here tonight, the electric utility tonight? Oh, I thought we did. So thank you. Okay, next up is proclamation regarding Earth Day. Who did I give that to?
That's me.
That's you?
That's me. Whereas each year, Earth Day can provide a special time to draw people together in appreciation of their mutual home, planet Earth, and bring a global feeling of community through realization of our deepening desire for life, freedom and love of our mutual dependence on each other. And whereas the creation of a healthy environment requires the establishment of a stable human society where the economic and material desires of humankind are balanced with ecological concerns. And whereas the theme for Earth Day twenty twenty-four is planet versus plastics. It's about fighting the big problem of plastics all over the world. The goal is to make sixty percent less plastic by twenty forty, not only having less trash, but also keeping us and the environment healthy. And whereas through voluntary action, individuals can join with one another in building the earth in harmony with nature and promote support thereof by private and government agencies. And whereas the city of Lakewood Beach is a waterfront community, has a special interest in cleanup efforts for Lake Osborne, the Lake Worth Lagoon and the Sea Fifty-One Canal. And whereas the city of Lakewood Beach has made neighborhood beautification a priority, including the planting of trees and enhancement of green space. And whereas the city of Lakewood Beach takes pride in its natural resources and conservation efforts. And whereas birthday each year can foster a common recognition that we must join together to invest in our planet's future for the health of our future generations. Now she Betty Rash, Mayor of the City of Lakewood Beach, Florida, by the virtue of authority vested current, on behalf of the city commission, do hereby proclaim April twenty-second, twenty twenty-four as Earth Day. In witness whereof, she is here to unset her hand and cause the seal of the city of Lakewood Beach, Florida, to be affixed the sixteenth day of April twenty twenty-four.
Thank you, Richard. Do you want to go and get it? And can you deliver that to the Siri or somewhere?
Absolutely.
Great. Thank you very much.
And I just wanna say one thing.
Sure.
I wanna. I, I wanna acknowledge Ted Brownstein's. Yeah.
Is that it?
Thank you. I just wanna acknowledge Ted Brownstein's efforts over decades in organizing Earth Days down at Cultural Plaza. He did a great job and engaged a lot of people in the community. So. Thank you.
It does wonderful stuff. Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, thank you. Who's that Arbor Day?
That's me.
That's you. And we have Dave Mabru here and people from the tree board, green landscape board. Are they here? Come on. Come on.
All right. City of Lakewood Beach proclamation. Whereas in eighteen seventy-two, the Nebraska Board of Agriculture established a special day to be set aside for the planting of trees. And whereas the holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska. And whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world. And whereas trees can be a solution to combine, to combating climate change by reducing the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cutting heating and cooling costs, moderating the temperature, cleaning the air, producing life-giving oxygen and providing habitat for wildlife. And whereas trees are a renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires and countless other wood products. And whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas and beautify our community. And whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Now therefore, she Betty Rash, Mayor of City of Lakewood Beach, Florida, by virtue of the authority vested in her and on behalf of the city commission, do hereby proclaim April twenty-seven, twenty twenty-four as Arbor Day. And I urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands. And I urge all citizens to plant trees, to gladden the heart and promote the well-being of this in future generations. In witness thereof, I have here to set her hand and cause a seal of the city of Lakewood Beach, Florida, to be affixed the sixteenth day of April twenty twenty-four.
Thank you very much. Our focus has been, we are working very diligently as much as we can with adding trees, getting landscape. The study that we're doing about the parks and stuff and protecting our trees and I think we need to be a little better at it sometimes. So.
I have a brief pronouncement. The Arbor Day protest observance event is a tree planting that will take place at the Norman J. Wimbley Gym on April twenty-seventh at ten AM. Everyone knows the location. The reason that location was chosen is that area has the lowest percentage of tree candy in the city at twelve percent. Citywide averaging nineteen percent.
Members of the tree board, we're gonna come down? I see a lot of tree enthusiasts. Hey, next up, libraries.
City of Lakewood Beach.
And come on up, library lady.
Whereas libraries connect our communities and enrich our lives in ways we may not realize. And whereas libraries, librarians, library workers and supporters across America are celebrating National Library Week. From the theme for the two thousand twenty-four is Ready, Set, Library. Whereas libraries create potential and possibilities within their communities, campuses and schools and level the playing field for all those who seek information and access to technologies. And whereas libraries continually grow and evolve in how they provide for the needs of every member of their community. And whereas libraries and librarians open up a world of possibility through innovative programming, job-seeking resources and the power of reading. And whereas librarians are trained tech-savvy professionals, providing technology training and access to downloadable content like eBooks. And whereas libraries support democracy and affect social change through their commitment to provide equitable access to information for all library users regardless of race, ethnicity, creed, ability, sexual orientation, gender identity or socioeconomic status. Now therefore, Betty Rash, Mayor of the City of Lakewood Beach, Florida, by virtue of the authority vested in her and on behalf of the city commission, do hereby proclaim April seventh through thirteenth, twenty twenty-four as National Library Week. In witness thereof, I have here on two set her hand and cause a seal of the Lakewood Beach, Florida, to be affixed to this sixteenth day of April twenty twenty-four.
Thank you very much.
These words, you know, I like them. Just a few words. I just want to say that I am indebted and thankful for the people who over eighty years ago decided our town needed a library, raised the money through bake sales and car washes and whatever they did because our town is unique and had the unique library. And I'm thankful that our town would not cave when the county wanted to suck us into the, the system that we stood as individual and we have a unique library that serves our community. And I'm very thankful for that. I'm, I'm very proud to be a part of that. And we want to continue to be able to serve Lakewood Beach.
And you have brought so many different innovative projects and reaching out to the community and bringing kids into the libraries. It's really wonderful. I think we should all go down and have a photograph taken for the Lakers.
We already have our artist author for next year lined up. She is the fantastic Juji Morales and she's world-renowned and can't wait to get to Lakewood Beach and meet us all. So.
All right, next up is, is is someone here to receive, actually receive the um, National Dark Night? People wore shirts. Whereas the beauty and wonder of natural night sky is a shared heritage of all human kind that inspires feelings of wonder and awe. And encourages interest in the sciences, technology, engineering arts and math. Including among young people living in the city of Lake Worth Beach. And whereas light pollution is an artificial light with adverse impacts to the environment, especially at night. And includes excessive light that causes glare and trespass, disrupts eco- disrupts ecosystems, wastes natural resources, energy and money. And has scientifically established economic and environmental consequences that significantly impact the wildlife and human health of all communities. And whereas many residents in our region live under a dome of light pollution and they're not able to fully enjoy the cultural, recreational, ecological. And health benefits of a naturally lit nocturnal environment and night sky in their own communities. And whereas the opportunity to view star-filled skies over Everglades National Park, Big Cypress National Reserve. Kissimmee Prairie Preserve State Park, Florida Keys and other areas of the Greater Everglades. The limited light pollution attracts tourists and gives pride and economic benefit to the city of Lake Worth. And whereas within the Greater Everglades, two international dark sky places, Big Cypress National Reserve and Kissimmee Prairie. Serve State Park earned their designation in two thousand sixteen and are facing the threat of losing their natural light. Their natural nights to sky glow as cities sprawl with increasingly excessive artificial light sources. And whereas light pollution impacts many wildlife species in our region, including sea turtles nesting along our coastlines. Birds migrating through the Atlantic Flyway, fireflies twinkling within the Everglades and bats foraging in darker areas that remain in South Florida. And whereas the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service has recognized that due to the loss of night sky quality to light pollution. The night sky resource has become nationally significant. And whereas protecting the night sky and quality of the nocturnal environment provides many benefits to the city of Lake Worth Beach communities. Including neighborhood availability, safety, quality of life and access to nature. And whereas solving the problem of light pollution requires educating governments, communities, businesses and citizens. And encouraging neighbor and ecology-friendly lighting best practices that are effective in preventing and reducing light pollution in all its forms. And whereas Dark Sky International has designated April second through April eighth. As International Dark Sky Week twenty twenty four to draw awareness to light pollution, its far-reaching impacts and solutions to mitigate it. And whereas the city of Lake Worth Beach wishes to extend awareness during all of April twenty twenty four to encourage ample and broader opportunities. For public participation. Now therefore, I Betty Rash Mayor of the City of Lake Worth Beach, Florida. By virtue of the authority vested in me and on behalf of the city commission, do hereby proclaim April twenty twenty four as National Dark Sky Month. And I put my hand on it and the seal will be sealed.
I had something to share about that because I actually asked for the proclamation. So thank you for reading it. It was a long one. Um, but this was the person who we invited to accept is actually driving down because uh, probably to nobody's surprise, she was up. To look at the eclipse in like upstate New York. So she's driving back and she wasn't able to make it in time. Hence why Richard is gonna accept it on her behalf.
Who was that?
What's that?
Who was that?
Oh, her name is Deanna Ampierre and she is the lead of uh, the Everglades Dark Sky. Organization which is evergladesdarksky.org and uh, it's part of the international dark sky movement, which we do have already policy of, you know. Um, honoring the the work that they do. And she just wanted to share that, you know, there are things on their website, events. The things to participate and learn about. And um, this is part of kind of a greater effort to educate and move people. To move towards better policy change uh, to protect the dark sky. Cause we are in a very lit up side of the Everglades. Uh, so, but I would say my street is actually really good in terms of that not having a lot of house lights and. And then every little bit does help. So there's a lot to learn about it and we would encourage everyone to visit evergladesdarksky.org.
And if any of you are on Facebook, Sean Moss is a photographer in the city. And he's just gone down to the Everglades the past couple of nights to photograph to get into a dark sky environment. And has posted some amazing photographs of the Milky Way of the stars in the Everglades. If you actually get a chance to go where it's dark. It's really so different than than what we experience. So thank you for bringing that forward and I will give that to Mr. Stowe. And he will give that to the appropriate lady. Thank you so much, Richard, for being here tonight to do that. Thank you. Okay, Water Conservation Month. There's a lot of, yeah, proclaiming a lot tonight. Who's that Water Conservation?
That's me.
That's you. Oh, of course.
Uh, no, I just had a, we could split up, but. The timing could not be perfect because water conservation, you're gonna hear in the next one. Our water team did just incredible work recently. Um, and the more we conserve water means. The less of the eight million gallons a day we have to divert out of to remain to get it fixed, which. Uh, headaches of a good job on that. Um, City of Lake Worth Beach Proclamation. Whereas water is a basic and essential need of every living creature. And whereas. The state of Florida Water Management Districts and the city of Lake Worth Beach are working together to increase awareness about the importance of water conservation. And whereas the city of Lake Worth Beach and the state of Florida has designated April typically a dry month when water demands are most acute. Florida's Water Conservation Month to educate citizens about how they can help save Florida's precious water resources. And whereas the city of Lake Worth Beach has always encouraged and supported water conservation through various educational programs and special events. And whereas every business, industry, school and citizen can make a difference when it comes to conserving water. And whereas every business, industry, school and citizen can help by saving water and thus promote a healthy economy and community. Now therefore, she Betty Rash Mayor of the City of Lake Worth Beach, Florida, by virtue of the authority vested in her and on behalf of the city commission. Do hereby proclaim April twenty twenty four as Water Conservation Month. In the city of Lake Worth Beach, Florida, and encourage citizens of the city of Lake Worth Beach to help. Protect our precious resource by practicing water-saving measures and becoming more aware of the need to save water. In witness whereof, she has here to set her hand and cause the seal. Of the city of Lake Worth Beach, Florida, to be affixed this sixteenth day of April twenty twenty four.
Thank you very much. And we're gonna move right along because Mrs. Henny is here with Water Professionals Month.
City of Lake Worth Beach Proclamation. Whereas water industry professionals dedicate themselves to the production and distribution. Of safe drinking water as well as the proper collection, treatment, reuse and disposal of wastewater and stormwater. I think, I think we need to expand on that sentence by this particular money, but um, we'll get to that after. Whereas regardless of where it originated. Our water is treated, tested, distributed, collected and re-treated in processes carefully managed by water professionals to meet stringent water quality standards. And whereas water professionals work twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, maintaining and upgrading their system, planning for the future. And improving the safety and resiliency of local water supplies. And whereas the success that we have experienced thus far, including this month. And will have in the future is made possible by the tremendous commitment and efforts of Florida's water professionals. Now therefore Betty Rash Mayor of the City of Lake Worth Beach. By virtue of the authority affixes the seal on this date. And um, I would guess that many people in the audience are aware that. Unfortunately, an AT&T contractor hit the main force mainline thirty-six inch diameter. Pretty big pipe. Um, and caused leaks, an enormous amount of effort around the clock, some of it, um, a lot of it. And mobilization. So, so kudos to our team and to the interaction.
Mr. Brown's gonna be talking about that in just a few minutes. Yeah. Amazing. Thank you. Thank you. Um, picture with the, picture with our water professional.
He's gonna be hiding. We can't have you hiding. Look to your right this a little bit. There you go. Act like you want.
I will say that uh.
Don't go anywhere.
I will say on the water conservation piece, due to our new water use permit that we uh, renewed in twenty seventeen, I think it was. We are uh, down about thirty-five percent of what we used to uh, produce. Two-edged sword for me is its revenue as well. But uh, that shows the water conservation and what we are doing here in the city of Lake Worth Beach and then incorporated Palm Beach County. Uh, as part of water, water conservation. So.
Okay. And we're gonna skip ahead a little bit. We're gonna, we're gonna jump away because everybody's here that needs to be thanked. And so we'll turn it over to Mr. Brown.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, yeah, I was gonna cover this in my city manager's report, but um, we have everyone here now looking to. Head sit through the designation of appointments, everything else. Um, so as as Commissioner or Vice Mayor McBoyle led on to obviously last Tuesday night. Um, a week ago, there was an incident over on Florida Vango. Um, where a contractor for AT&T hit the the thirty-six inch force main. Um, it is basically been a twenty-four hour round-the-clock operation since then. Um. It it's just been an incredible uh, effort from from our staff and. Um, I I know people, it's hard to understand unless you've actually been out there and seen it and known what that operation is and what what it took. Um, I know when I, when I went out on Friday, um, I had no experience the entire night with you saying until seven in the morning, but um. It was uh, it's just one of those things that that the dedication of our staff can't be understated and and. Everyone understood the importance of what was going on. Um, as the, he kind of looked over our shipper the whole time. Um, and in local site meetings, but it was one of those things that everyone understood what had to happen. Um. A lot of, I mean Judy, I mean, just the time that was spent out there. No one was tired asking to go home or retired, but. Uh, there, there was no complaining or anything. It's just like when, when the chips are down or operations people, we know it has to happen. There is no, no clock or anything. So I just wanted to kind of um, hand it over to Sam and kind of give like a little update on on where we currently are. But I mean, it's just. I can't stand it enough.
And it's amazing because the, you know, out of that tragedy, really.
Yeah.
What the message that came through in the public with our citizens and with paper was how quickly and how efficiently it was dealt with. So really, I mean, it was a terrible thing to go through, but the city really got. Kudos for how we handled it and it's how we as though.
Yeah, I did want to mention also, we had a, on the Friday evening, we had a uh, a meeting um, among the city managers in the sub-regional partner group. And it was nothing but across the board annihilation for for our city of Lake Worth Beach utility staff. So. It's not just internal where we're seeing this, it's just we're seeing this across the county. Even on the point I was on the phone with Tom on there and earlier on, county level, it's just across the board. So, um, second to none. Second to none. So.
Uh, thank you so much.
Yes, I would like to uh, personally thank Judy Love. She really is the one that took the bull by the horns. Uh, while I was out there slaying dragons, Judy was actually uh, behind the scenes making phone calls. Uh, we are part of Florborne, uh, Florida warning, uh, which is a group of utilities in Palm Beach County and uh. Uh, Martin County, Miami Dade. We had uh, people from Miami Dade all the way to Jupiter respond with back trucks, equipment. Any parts and pieces that we needed, people were there. And it really was on the gallant effort of Judy and her contacts and her network. That really allowed this to happen as quick as it did. If we would have had to have delayed this anymore than a couple of hours, it could have gotten worse. We would have had more spill out into the L-ten canal. So I really wanna thank Judy and her team and everybody else that uh, that responded to that. That's really where that time savings came in is uh, the quickness of Florborne and Judy and her team had jumped in out there and. Got things together. So.
So much. We have so much to bring for the.
Well, I am happy to say that things are looking brighter out there. Uh, the bypass is going to be there for quite some time. Uh, we are in the middle. We bypassed the, the break. Yes, ma'am, sure did. Uh, I would like to bring you out there and show you around. Cause it would be very interesting for everybody on the, on the dais to to come out and take a look at things. Um, the contractor is in exploratory surgery mode at this point. Cause we really don't know where the leak has happened. So uh, he was back feeling today and uh, trying to get. An idea of uh, how far down it is. We're about twenty feet in the ground, so we have to do shoring. We have to do uh. It's quite a significant feat on uh, on what we're having to do here. Water quality is looking better on the east side of L-ten canal. Much better. Uh, we've been able to uh, track it for the last five days. You can start seeing the. Ecolite starting to come down. We're right back almost in baseline levels of where it was at before it started. On the east side of the, of the, of the break. That's great news for all residents. Cause where a lot of residents are, it's on that east side. And Lake Osborne, Lake Ida and the chain of lakes. But we're looking really good in those areas there. The Stub Canal, or I I keep calling it the Stub Canal, the half a mile piece of canal that. We were able to use and Lake Worth Drainage District allowed us to use as storage. So we didn't continue to put. A plume of sewage in the L-ten and out through Lake Osborne. It's uh, we've treated it with chlorine. We put about two thousand gallons of chlorine out in it at this point. Uh, we've met breakpoint. So now it's uh, a point of adding a little more chlorine to it. To increase it to maybe five parts. And at that point, uh, we're at water quality standards. I'm not gonna drink it, trust me. We are able to, we are able to treat it now better. Uh, we are taking that water and we're putting it right back in the force main, so it's not going anywhere. Uh, we are inducing fresh water west of us. So we're able to turn over that stretch of canal, maybe in the next two days. We should have a whole fresh uh, set of water in there. Uh, and then the sewer that's. This left is gone at that point. So we're able, that we're able to open those, open the canal back up. And then business as usual, we are expecting rain on Monday. So the contractor and all of us are aware of that. They are, we still have people out there now. We'll have people out there tonight. We'll have people out there tomorrow. So it's still an ongoing construction site. And uh, there again, I appreciate. The di- the dais Jamie staff i- has been remarkable. And Jamie's right, I haven't heard no from anybody. And so I certainly appreciate that. It makes my job much easier. So.
Well, thank you and thank you all. Really convey that to the folks that are still out there working. That we appreciate what they're doing.
I'll, I'll let them know.
Thank you very much.
I'll stop by there on the way home and hope to get home by midnight.
But I thought that they, the last thing they need is like me coming up and saying.
No, no, uh, honestly, the county, the county administrator, she came out. Uh, a lot of people have come out. We have a safe place to stand and kind of talk about what's going on there. And it would be a pleasure to have the dais come out and take a look.
And then please let me know anytime you guys want to and we'll, we'll set up a little field trip.
Yeah, that'd be great.
I did want to tell you one other thing, cause I, I've known Judy Love for a long time, yeah. But I was very proud. Um, so there was a uh, one of the uh, meetings on site on Friday night at ten o'clock. Um, which had all of our um, you know, neighbors and and they had their lift station operations and everything out there because. It was, it was a succession of things that needed to happen in order for this to be successful overnight on Friday. So Sam, when I started the meeting, goes, Judy, your show. You run it and she scout up there and just lay it out. Here's what time you guys need to start pumping everything down. Here's what time your lift station need to off. Here's the time we're kicking ours off. We're doing the five, just lay the whole thing out. I'm looking over at Judy, I'm like. So I was proud.
It was certainly her show and and well deserved, for sure.
Yes, it was just such an amazing effort. Yeah.
Thank you.
Bye. Thank you. So, okay, now we have, um, designation of appointments. Um, the first one up is the informant of the vice mayor and vice mayor approach them.
Madam Mayor?
Yes?
Just to let you know, there is some public comment on this, um, this item.
Okay, let's have a motion and a second and then we'll think over come. Do I have a motion? Oh, Ms. Meg?
I make a motion to appoint Sarah Malaga in place of mayor.
Do I have a second? I'll pass the gavel to Mr. McBoy and I will second that motion. All in favor? Aye.
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 We have comments.
Comments, okay. Um, public comment. So. Let's see.
I believe, Mr. City Manager, are there blue cards for this?
I'm already passing down.
Oh, okay.
Okay, now, okay, there's three for, um, the bat. This one has something else. Um, I'll go for, uh, Jeanne Powell. And up after Ginny is Sarah Noel and up after Sarah is Catherine Colmeyer.
Jenny Powell, two-two-four North Palm Way. Um, I guess it's a little weird because you just took a vote.
Well, we.
Um, or all of us took a vote. Um, because I'm here to support Christopher McBoy, Commissioner McBoy, to be reappointed as the vice mayor of our city. He served the city very well. He knows the city very well. And I think that is very critical to, to that position and to commissions. There's several important reasons to keep him on as vice mayor. He is fluent in several languages, which ensures that the city can better communicate with our diverse populations, which I feel is sometimes left behind. In addition, Commissioner McBoy has an excellent understanding of the complex environmental issues we face as a city. Due to his scientific and tech, technical expertise, Dr. McBoy knows the issues and can work with city staff to find ways to solve problems. It's hard to argue with the success of the twenty-four million dollar grant that he helped secure for our electoral utility. He has been responsible for some real wins for our city. This improves our image locally and beyond and gives the city credibility. If you think the things I've described are valuable to our city, please reappoint Commissioner McBoy as vice mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Sarah Noel, followed by Catherine Colmeyer.
Good afternoon, Sarah Noel, address twelve forty-two Southeast Street, Lake Worth, Florida. I'm here to support Commissioner McBoy. I also want to say before, thank you, Sarah. You've been a very, uh, I just want to thank you because, uh, you've given, you know, um, I'm sorry, I just want the words to come out right. Um, oh, and thank you, Sarah, because you, you came through the neighborhood, I know when you were doing your election and you, uh, you know, brought my grandson some Cheetos. You didn't bring me no Cheetos, but it's okay. You brought them some Cheetos. That's nice. Uh, but, um, I want to speak to you after this, you know, because I know this is not really a place, but, um, my parents, um, are really concerned when you was, uh, commissioner, you know, when you was debating against, um, uh, Commissioner, um, when you were debating against Reverend Pinkley. You said it was, you, you spoke up, you know, because you said there was asbestos in the building. And we just, the parents are concerned about that. We want to just know a little bit more about the asbestos, this there, um, you know, uh, it's, you know, um, we have English and we have a lot of Creole people who don't understand. And I, you know, as being president of the, uh, you know, Head Start Program, Black Earth, I don't have an answer. So I would like you to just speak to me after they give you some understanding, so I can take back to them. But, but a real issue I'm here for Christian McBoy. He, he, Christian McBoy is a really out of doing, you know, aspiration to the city. I, I do believe that if it wasn't for Christian McBoy, Head Start Center would have closed down due to a misunderstanding. You know, so we need somebody to be a backbone, you know, somebody to have a backbone to speak up sometimes, you know, and we are all, you know, people, you know, and sometimes things get miscommunicated, you know, and when it gets miscommunicated, you know, it, it could go in the wrong way, you know?
Thank you. That's fine.
So finish your statements. Go ahead.
So I'd like to say, thank you, Mr. McBoy, for being that backbone. And, uh, you know, here for all parents, you know, we support you. And, um, we thank you so much for all that you've done. Really inspiration. And that's from the bottom of my heart. And I do apologize. That's been a lot of pain, but you know, I, when I get really anxious because I'm nervous about everything, you know, it inspires a whole lot of pain.
Well, thank you for coming. Thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you.
And I'm sure Ms. Malaga will follow up with you. Catherine Colmeyer, followed by Mariana Blanco, followed by Jane, Jane Lee Mendez.
Catherine Colmeyer. Five and three thousand seven hundred and seventy. I'm here to, um, voice my support for the appointment of Commissioner McBoy to continue as vice mayor, considering, oh, God, so nervous for late, considering the excellent work he's done over the last three years and the tireless hard work I know he puts in. Um, he has many qualifications that would bring kudos to our city. He's a respected scientist. He approaches things with an analytical and reasonable mind. He has the best interests of our city at heart. He has technical expertise regarding the water and electric utilities and was pivotal in the achievement of that grant last year, which is going to make just such a huge difference. His trilingual has connections with our diverse communities, as Ginny said. He's the longest-serving member of the commission and overall a stand-up guy, in my personal opinion. Um, but he has shown consistent dedication to the city. So I think that, um, it would be a very wise decision to appoint Commissioner McBoy. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Colmeyer. Mariana Blanco, followed by Jane Lee Mendez.
Good evening, commissioners. This is a little awkward because y'all just voted, but, um, my name is Mari Blanco from the GMC seventeen seventy-six Lake Worth Road. And I am here to talk about, uh, some of the great things that the city has accomplished um, and continues to accomplish. While the goal is to continue growing Lake Worth Beach's success, it is fair to highlight some of the great accomplishments that the city has made with the leadership of both Mayor Resh and Commissioner, and Vice Mayor McBoy. While affordable housing is no longer affordable, we know that to be true. Working together, you have managed to get the Madison Terrace Project moving, which will allow pet-friendly housing that will truly be affordable to senior residents. And as a team, you have also accomplished great wins for rental properties, including lowering electric rates and setting up funds for storm rate spikes. Utility topics will never make the headlines. We know that they're not the topic that people want to talk about. But it is important to have financial reassurance with everything else around those skyrocketing in prices. And of course, it was mentioned, the twenty-three million dollar grant that the city just got, I do think that that will uh, bring, have a huge financial impact in the growth of the city. And I do think twenty-three million dollars is pretty impressive. Um, these are just a few of the accomplishments that the city has taken on with the leadership of Mayor Resh and Vice Mayor McBoy. And I would strongly recommend that the commission consider the strength that this leadership brings, not to mention that Vice Mayor McBoy has been a great, great part of the community and continues to always be present. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Jane Lee Mendez, followed by Peggy Fisher.
My name is Jane Lee Mendez. My address is ten zero seven North J Street. Um, I'm here to voice my support for Commissioner McBoy because he is always present within the community. Whenever you need help, he never fails to help when a community member is in need. And as a teacher, you know, I feel the support and I'm thankful for, just from the point.
Your teacher here?
Yes, at, uh, the Guatemalan Center.
Oh, good.
With IDP case.
Great. Thank you. Thank you. Up next, Peggy Fisher.
Peggy Fisher, North J Street, Lake Worth Beach. Um, I'm, I support making Sarah Malaga vice mayor for the city. She has done a lot of work not only in our city, but throughout the government. She is very active in League of Cities, has gone through lots of training at League of Cities and goes to town hall on a regular basis and advocates for us. Um, this isn't a popularity contest. Uh, this is something that regularly, um, rotates among commissioners. This is the first time in the sixteen years that I've been coming to commission meeting that I've ever seen comment on this subject. It is always just decided by the five of you sitting up there, whoever it may be. Um, I personally have a very different uh, opinion of Vice Mayor McBoy's qualifications based on my personal experience and other personal experiences that have been relayed to me. Uh, again, I support Sarah Malaga to be vice mayor.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, do you have any, uh, blue cards for this item?
I have four comments, Madam Mayor.
Okay.
Louise Tamayo, one sixteen Wellesley Drive. Dear Madam Mayor, I would like you to consider reappointing Dr. Chris McBoy as our next vice mayor. I have known Dr. McBoy for many years and recommend him for this position based on his resume and the following attributes. One, he is the most experienced member of our city commission. Two, he is trilingual and has a good relationship with our Hispanic and Haitian members of our community. Three, he is a great scientist that understands well the operation of the city's water and electrical utilities. Four, he has vast experience in the management of our natural resources and is also knowledgeable in climate change mitigation. Five, above all, he is an honest person who is truly committed to the city and has no self-serving interest in personal gain. Thank you for your consideration. Donna Kerner, ten twelve North J Street. I would like to offer my support to current vice mayor, Dr. Christopher McBoy. He provides the City of Lake Worth Beach Commission and residents with extensive knowledge and expertise that we need to continue to avail ourselves of. Dr. McBoy is the longest-serving commission member. He is a resident expert in water and electric systems, including alternative energy, trees and plants, and the city tree and landscaping ordinance, Spanish and French language skills, multicultural knowledge, understanding and advocacy of the diverse Latino and Haitian communities. I offer my vote of confidence in Vice Mayor Dr. McBoy and strongly urge that continue in his current role to serve the commission and the residents of the City of Lake Worth Beach. Michael McLeod, four-two-nine North J Street. Tonight, the commission chooses who will be appointed vice mayor. I strongly urge that Commissioner Chris McBoy be reappointed. It behooves the commission to elect the most qualified person to fulfill the vice mayoral role absent politics. That person is Mr. McBoy. In the recent election campaign, this is the assessment wanted by all. One asks that the same uniform standard be applied in consideration of appointments to position on the commission boards and within the administration. Commissioner McBoy's considerable knowledge, I'm sorry, considerable experience as a commissioner and his substantial technical and social knowledge makes him indisputably the best choice for the city as vice mayor. Some of the points that cannot be overlooked and distinguished, Mr. McBoy, are longest-serving on the commission, substantial knowledge of the technical aspects of the city. Dr. McBoy's scientists bolsters the credibility of the city, particularly when it pursues technical grants or participation in conferences. Knowledge of water and electrical systems. Strong connection to the Haitian and Latino communities. Language skills in French and Spanish to facilitate communications and with those communities. Multicultural knowledge important to building bridges in a city like Lake Worth Beach. Knowledge of plants, trees. The gravitas of Mr. McBoy's resume is a benefit to the city on multiple levels. If one value having the best for the city, and I believe that is the case, then clearly the vote must be for the continuation of Commissioner, Commissioner McBoy as vice mayor. And the last comment is from Kathy McLeod, one-two-four South K Street. I would like to strongly urge the reappointment of Commissioner Christopher McBoy to the position of vice mayor. As relatively new recent arrivals in Lake Worth Beach, we consider ourselves fortunate to be able to benefit from Commissioner McBoy's solid academic and technical knowledge, as well as an extensive understanding of the workings of the city. Particularly heartening is his rich cultural and humanitarian background. These are rare qualities in a public servant these days and a great gift to the citizens of Lake Worth Beach. Those are all the comments for this item, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much. We have one, one day coming, but we're gonna let it up. Ellen?
Hello, Evelyn Norcullio, fifteen South Goffview Road. Um, I'm, you are, some of you have already known me personally. And I know that I am a firm believer of, if you really love where you live, you will get involved as much as possible. And I'm so happy that I live in a city where I can sit down with my mayor and I can sit down with the commissioners and actually figure out how things work. And honestly, I am such a huge supporter of McBoy, mostly because when I came here, I said that just, just as a visitor, I noticed that there was such a disconnect between this different neighborhoods and communities, especially the Hispanic community, as a Nicaraguan myself. Um, and I was just trying to figure out where that all started and where that all stemmed. And the one thing that I said was that there needs to be transparency and communication and there needs to be respect. And there needs to be an acknowledgement of that disconnect. And McBoy, with his connection with the Guatemalan Center, uh, with that whole neighborhood, just from my personal experience, I've already worked on two campaigns. I have knocked on doors. I am not afraid to be friendly with my neighbors. And honestly, and, um, Sarah, that's why I reached out to you today, Commissioner Malaga, um, why I reached out to you today, because I was very surprised that there was actually a liaison with the CRA and Commissioner. And there is supposedly a liaison with the NIP and, um, Neighborhood Association. And I, I just don't trust you yet. And I want to because you're here and I respect you and I respect you, but I definitely would appreciate if McBoy stays. Um, I like the fact that some of him, like some of the members on the commissioner, on the commission board, um, are more open to speaking to our young adults, our millennials. We do, um, we are a big part of the city and unfortunately we haven't come out to vote. And again, there is a disconnect, a lack of communication. And I want people sitting on this, who are here, that actually want to communicate and respect us and say that you actually, you have a chance. We hear you. We listen. We care. So I hope that you hear all these voices saying we want McBoy stay.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Um, Mr. Diaz, you like that?
Yeah, um, yeah, it's a little bit surprising how fast that motion was made, but first and foremost, like, Mayor, I expect you to have no issues during the rest of this, so I'm kind of surprised at the desire for change. And really what it comes down to, to me is that there's a lot of experience. Now we know there's a lot of community want and desire. Um, and you know, I think the way we're set up now is a good balance. Not that it's really, you know, a thing where you're required to have balance because it's the vice mayor and the. the vice mayor and the pro tem is there just in case. Um, so it's a little bit surprising to see any kind of desire to change where we're at right now, because it seems to work really well. Um, both of you, both of, uh, of you have a great deal of experience. Obviously, Vice Mayor McVoy has, you know, been doing this a really long time. Um, so, yeah, I mean, there's a lot I could say on where this may have, may have come out of, but the reality is, I think we're set up really well. People in the community like it. Um, and I would move to keep it as it is, so.
We have a motion in second.
Right.
Um, I will call the vote. Motion second, all in favor of Sarah Malaga being vice mayor. Signify by saying aye, aye.
Aye, aye.
Thank you. The vote, the motion carries. Now we have Vice Mayor Pro Tem. Vice Mayor Pro Tem.
I'm sorry, Madam Mayor, what was, I heard the ayes. Were there nays, or was it?
Yes, nay from me.
Two nays, three ayes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, now we have Vice Mayor Pro Tem, and essentially with that is it's both the mayor and the vice mayor are unavailable. The Vice Mayor Pro Tem comes, runs a meeting and that sort of thing. Uh, I don't even know if it happened much, but, um, it was, okay, so I will, I'll issue a motion for Vice Mayor Pro Tem.
I'm moving ahead. Commissioner, now Commissioner McVoy to be Vice Mayor Pro Tem.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, thank you very much. So, yeah. Moving right along, and this is, um, we're going to the designation of appointments. Each year we go through this. Um, in different areas that we all are representative of. Um, right, let's have the current status. The TPA is
Diaz.
Yes, okay. Are you interested in staying there?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. Um, Palm Beach League of Cities, I'm the representative for that. I have an interest in staying there. I've now been appointed to the board a second time, so it makes sort of sense. The next one is the CRA.
That's me.
That's you. Are you interested in doing that?
Yes, nobody else is interested.
NA PC President, the President's Council of the Neighborhood Association, that is me as well. Oh, you're just a busy girl. This, what liaison are you at this point?
Treasure Coast, regional.
So, the NA PC, do you want to continue NA PC?
I, I would love for somebody else to do it, because it does give you, besides what other people have said, I do attend the meetings. It's the first Saturday of the month at nine AM. It does give you, um, a connection to all the neighborhood associations and the presidents. I think it's valuable. I've been doing it since I left it, and I would love for somebody else to step in. Um, just so you can hear from the residents and the people who, who, who show up and volunteer and do the things in the city. Um, I think that Mr. Diaz or, or Miss, or Miss May would be a great fit for that. Um, and it's the same with the CRA. I mean, I love being liaison to the CRA, but if somebody else wants to rotate, I think that Commissioner Diaz is doing a great job with the transportation planning, and there's a lot of things that are moving forward in that. And I think that making a change with that department would be drastic right now. Um, so I'm open.
Mr. McVoy, you're interested in staying on the Treasure Coast Regional Planning? I'm assuming that.
Yeah.
So, then we have, Ms. May, would you be interested in the NA PC?
I'd be interested in the CRA, and I would be interested in CRA, I mean, the NA PC. I am not interested in the education task force.
Well, sometimes we hope that, I mean, okay.
No, I, I just think as a teacher, I don't think it's appropriate to be on the task force. Um, I've also already served on the task force as the president, or as the chairperson. And, um, I do it all day. I'd like to learn something too.
I can dig on the education task force, because although I don't have classroom teaching experience, I do teach kids outside of classroom. I've also provided curriculum for, uh, the districts. I know a lot of the.
So, it'd be double duty for you, TPA and education?
Sure.
You're good with that? Again, and.
Thank you.
Yep.
Mimi, you'll take the NA PC?
I can, I'm the CRA.
Yeah, she, Ms. Voy has been really involved with the CRA, let's.
Okay, I'll do NA PC.
Thank you. Okay, and we're gonna, every year, we're gonna go through this, even though it says.
I'm sorry, Madam Mayor.
I'm sorry?
Could we have a motion for each of these? That would be waiting.
We're getting there, we're getting there.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, it sounded like the appointments were being made. I apologize.
Why are we always, how about the Treasure Coast is not listed on here?
Yeah, do we know why?
We talked about this last time.
Is that through the league?
League of Cities, it is the League of Cities, it's a different chapter, but, um, but it still should be on there.
It was on there erroneously in the past. Um, we do not, um, you all as the commission can make a recommendation. You cannot do the actual appointment. So, that's how, it was, it was a problem in the past that we need appointment and we corrected it.
It's the actual Treasure Coast that makes the appointment, would make the recommendation.
Okay, got it.
Okay, great.
I think it's the league. It's the league, because like, yeah, County Water Resources Task Force and the Lake Worth Legion Initiative, which I'm on, is, you know, because the league reached out and, and asked.
Okay, can I ask a question?
Sure.
Um, does having somebody else be the liaison prevent another commissioner from attending?
Absolutely not.
No, not, not attending.
No, no.
And participating, I mean, yeah.
The Commissioner Malaga is involved, has been liaison there for a couple of years, and I've not fought her about it for a couple of years. But I'm very involved with the CRA.
Yeah, because the mayor comes to them, and we just don't talk about anything that's.
Yeah, we just, she and I cannot discuss it.
Yeah, but I have a constant line of communication from, from this old even, it's, it's open. It's not, you can't talk to them if you're not. Okay, absolutely.
And I'll point out that CRA, you know, not, uh, it's not like it's like you, but like CRA does have a lot of like land use stuff, which Commissioner Malaga does have, again, I have to wait, so.
No, I'm, I'm, I just want to learn something new and I don't want to be.
Oh, you're, you're gonna learn lots.
And, and for those of you, um, Mr. Diaz just asked me, did I stand, did I step down as an officer of the NA PC? Yes, I did that a couple of months ago, so I have no position. I have no vote at NA PC. I'll just be the liaison now.
He'll just be the liaison. Okay, so we need a motion for. Somebody make a motion, somebody make a motion.
Do they need to be?
Can I do them all?
Well, yeah, I need to be group.
Just a moment.
Melissa, can I do the motion all at once?
Uh, slowly.
Okay.
I think you also need an alternate, TPA, yeah.
Okay, you want to do this, okay.
Sure.
All right, I make a motion to, um, appoint Commissioner Diaz to the Transportation, uh, Planning Authority.
With an alternate.
Hold on, as well as to the Education Task Force. Uh, I make a motion to appoint, um, Commissioner McVoy as the alternate to the TPA. I make a motion to appoint Mayor Resh to the Palm Beach County League of Cities. Uh, Commissioner, oh, Vice Mayor Malaga to the CRA. And Commissioner May to NA PC.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much, everybody. It's, we, yeah, we share information. I mean, it's, it's, it's all.
Okay.
I don't go to the TP. Um, I went to NA PC once, they yelled at me, so I'm not going. Um, okay, so now, moving right along, it's seven thirty eight.
Wait, you might have, we might need the Education Task Force.
Yeah, he did, he mentioned it. Okay, so, Commissioner Liaison Reports and Comments, let's start with District One.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, it's been a busy couple of weeks. Uh, I was the guest speaker at Pear Cove last night. That was very exciting, covered all of the major happenings in the City of Lake Worth Beach. Thank everyone for coming out to vote.
Thank you.
And for coming out a second time to vote for the mayor's runoff. Um, we talked about some of the projects that are happening. Uh, let's see, Military Makeover, how fun was that, you guys? So, for those of you who don't know, we were able to attend the Military Makeover, and this is Military Makeover with Montel, which is a TV show, and they chose a Lake Worth Beach veteran, and they redid his entire home, volunteers from all over the city. Uh, I was very excited to learn that they hired a photographer who lived right here on Southeast Street. They hired the electrical company, it was from Lake Worth Beach, and it was really hands-on. So, we all were there on Sunday, right?
Everybody.
Sunday was, we were all there Sunday for the big reveal, and to watch the homeowners come up, that was exciting. Royal Point Santa Neighborhood Association meeting is tomorrow night. I will be there. Uh, we all were at Pathway, Path to College Ribbon Cutting, um, a week and a half ago now. So, it's exciting to see that project coming online and the, what they're gonna do for the youth in our community. And they're already doing it, but to have it accessible right there on Lake Avenue for our kids and for all the kids who aren't part of it, to see what's happening there and the energy I think that's gonna happen. Christine and her group, they just do an amazing job. Um, so I want to give a shout out to the CRA and to Senator Powell for making that come to fruition. And then, mark your calendars, Saturday, the twenty seventh, at ten o'clock, is the MLK mural.
Right.
Um, basically saying goodbye, take the last picture commemorative event from ten to eleven thirty. And that's behind the Cultural Council on Lake Avenue. The MLK mural will be repainted. And it's kind of the last time to come out and take pictures and, and be part of it. So, please come out and partake.
And I think they want a lot of public participation in that. It's a very touchy subject. Yes or two?
I want to say thank you to the Pan's Garden, Susan Lerner of Pan's Garden on Palm Beach. Uh, I was asked to help out with planting seeds with kids at the Guatemalan Maya Center for Farm Workers. Um, kind of festival that happened last Saturday, I think. And, uh, I said, well, let's do some native seeds. Susan Lerner, actually, a resident of the city, sent me this, Susan, and she provided a whole bunch of them, and we planted them up. Um, I too was very excited to be at the opening of the Path to College, a really positive program. Um, that I think is gonna take off well. The location is great. Uh, I was asked to participate in an end of, uh, the semester award ceremony, certificates for English as second language at the, uh, meets at Island Elementary, part of the school district. Uh, a number of awards and certificates were given out, and for some reason, that program seems to regularly get a lot of awards. Four of their students won the essay contest. Uh, it was interesting to hear also, moving really, more than interesting. Um, people are very dedicated, who are new Americans in our community and want to learn English, put a lot of effort. One woman, uh, could not be there for, for her graduation because she works the night shift, she comes home, makes breakfast for the family, goes to sleep for an hour. Um, and then comes to the class, makes lunch, gets another hour or two of sleep, and then goes off to work again. That level of dedication of people to fit into our community, fit into the language is really quite remarkable. Um, ongoing butterfly releases at the, uh, Escalita Maya at Island. Multiple monarchs, uh, both of our giant sawletail butterflies are thistless and hatch. And, uh, we're expanding out a little bit. Butterflies have swollen down some, and we're switching over to hermit crabs. Thank you, Commissioner Diaz and his wife Melissa, for reassuring me that I will not be making any significant dent in the hermit crab population, even if we lose a few of the kids. Um, the, uh, downfall, I don't think Sam's still here. We really need to make the downfall at Wellesley, I believe it is, both at Wellesley and Eighteenth, much more accessible. You don't really want commissioners climbing over fences and stuff to have to get down to the water, but, uh, I did, found lots of stuff. I'm finding that kids love to touch things. So, um, and if you're lucky, you can even get them to put a hermit crab in their hands. The girls were a little more, um, bold, bold, that's exactly the right word, thank you, Mayor. Um, to try it out, a little sweet, but, um, it's, it's very rewarding to see connect kids in our community with the wildlife that we do still have around us, and I'm grateful for that opportunity. Thank you. Uh, Commissioner May?
All right, um, yeah, the, first of all, I do want to, um, thank the, the Water Department and the rest of the, um, utilities. So, I didn't really understand what a force main was, but if you don't know, it's a three-inch pipe of sewer. Thirty, thirty foot, three foot pipe of sewer, like poop, that you can't stop. And like, you can't just cut it off, you can't just cut it off, because then people can't flush their toilets. Like, and they had to, like, suck it away over and over and over again. So, like, once he broke it down, like, you know, to a sixth grader over here, I was like, that's insane that they were able to stop that, and it's a week, and it's almost back to the normal level. So, that is amazing. So, I'm, I'm just so proud that you guys are, are our city, um, employees. That's just fabulous. Um, so, in, since I've been sworn in within a week, I met with Catherine Bear. I met with William Water, I met with Glenn Trisivio. I met, I have a meeting with Yolanda next week. Um, right now, it's a little bit tough, because, um, I'm still teaching full-time. Um, and my kids have to take their final test on May fourteenth. Uh, so after May fourteenth, I'm gonna be able to have a little bit of breathing room. Last day of school is May thirty-first, then I have all summer. And then, then the fall, when I, we go back to school, I'll be going back every other day. So, it'll be confusing, but I'll have a lot more availability, and, um, I do look forward to setting a set time uh, monthly to meet with residents. Um, that's really important to me. Um, I'm excited to continue working with the NA PC. I'm excited to work with the Leisure Services, um, connecting those two groups, so I think that'll be fabulous. And, um, I'm, oh, one other thing, at the Military Makeover, which was pretty cool, we all get yelled at by Montel to be quiet. Remember that?
Yes.
Chestnuts. Chestnuts by Montel. Um, but, first, it was, it was just beautiful to look out at our, at our citizens, like, everybody there, we have just such a, such a mixture of, um, of people, you know, and it was just the, the family. I talked to the kids, and they were so excited to see their new rooms, and, uh, the designer was so friendly. And what was the best part, though, was that everybody that worked on that show specifically took the time out to say that working with Lake Worth Beach was the easiest city that they have worked with. That everybody was wonderful, from shutting the streets down to the permits, to every single part of the project. So, thank you very much, Ms. Daff, for that as well. It's absolutely fabulous. Um, and then, my husband came up to me in the middle of it and told me, I don't know if you guys know this, but I'm a big Buffalo Bills fan. Um, that there was a Buffalo Bill there. And his name was Brandon Bryant. I actually did, had not heard of him, but he is now a free agent and he's an author. So, he wrote, he's writing children's books, and so he wrote one book already, and it's called So You Want to Be an Athlete. And, um, it's about the sacrifice that, that student athletes have to make in order to be successful. So, um, I got one of the books for each of the four elementary schools, so I gave those to Cindy, so she can, she can get those to the schools. And, um, he also is connected with, um, oh, God, I'm gonna forget the name. It's a weird coach name that starts with a V.
Valbano.
No, Val, girl, I think. Anyway, uh, he, he has a huge foundation for literacy. And Brandon was connected with other players who are interested in coming to read to our students. So, um, I gave his number to Cindy as well to set that up. So, you know, I just, that's the coolest part about this job. You meet somebody and you're like, oh, you could do this. So, you're just connecting people. I remember Sarah telling me that. Vice Mayor Malaga, telling me that, that one of the coolest parts about the job is connecting people and, and allowing the work to happen and just kind of just being the conduit. So, I'm so grateful to be here. Thank you.
Thank you. District Four.
Um, I'll keep my brief. I have the TPA governing board meeting Thursday, so thank you for that reappointment. Looking forward to that. Um, you know, number one comment like we got earlier is our traffic woes. And, um, not that this is like really any kind of consolation, but South Florida and Jacksonville is suffering. And at least, if you saw a headline recently the other day, if you were unfortunate, unfortunately took, uh, you know, I forget what that expressway is, to keep this game, to go to the beach over the weekend. It would have taken you nearly six hours to travel about three, we can breath, that's about, like, three-ish miles or something insane like that. And, um, so it's, it's something that DOT, TPA, all the agencies are well aware of. Um, coordinating construction is certainly a challenge when you have that many contractors and that many agencies with their hands in the pot, but one day, we're gonna look back at it, and then we're gonna have nice smooth roads, and we're gonna be like, it was worth it. For those several years of pain and misery, but, um, other than that, uh, pretty briefly, I I, big shout, I, I was, I unfortunately missed the ribbon cutting to Path to College, but, uh, Christine and Desiree, who are big parts in that. Fun fact, one of the first kids that I held a summer camp with was Christine's son, that many years. Fun fact, one of the first kids that I held a summer camp with was uh, Christine's son, many years ago. And, and she was a big reason uh, why my nonprofit work expanded through that kind of work. It wasn't, it wasn't necessarily a preemptive choice on my end, let's put it that way, it was requested. Um, and it's grown since then, I've learned a lot from her and, and over the years, seen Path to College grow. And the fact that it's homegrown, Lake Worth grow, and what they do, her and Desiree, it's, and their entire team now. Um, it's phenomenal, so I just love, love that they're in our community and and on, they have that building because they're, they're just gonna do amazing work. And other than that, I did wanna give a special recognition to Bryant Park Neighborhood Association. Uh, I see one board here, Vice President Evelyn is uh, attending. Cause they showed up, they're, we've been working on South Fifth and Federal. You might notice there's, it's a lot more clean now, it used to be overgrown, a lot of invasives and things like that. And now it's uh, definitely it's much more cleaned up. And uh, over the course of a couple weekends, we uh, about half dozen to a little bit more volunteers. Hand cut sawed, which if you've never done that, is a workout. And I'm used to doing it, but those volunteers, they really crushed it, they work hard and it's really a testament to. You know, there's a lot of these projects in a lot of areas, there's often a lot of complaints of, you know, there is this property, what can we do? And sometimes you gotta show up and they really showed up to, so much so that if I have to ever do habitat restoration again, I might hire them. They were really efficient at cutting that saw, it's backbreaking work, so.
Running saw.
So basically, I use like a weighted shovel that's sharpened and what, what Florida likes to call grass. You go and you just cut it and then you remove the top few inches. And it doesn't just come up, you gotta like, really put your back into it. Um, and, and they, then we did a pretty large swath of area, I think we dropped something like sixty to seventy bags of mulch. Which is a lot, uh, nearly in tons, and they did it really quickly in this fan of the morning, so. Great job and I'm looking forward to continuing that work and you're gonna see pollinators and more plants and more beautification in that corner.
And that's the quarter of Fifth and Fifth.
South Fifth and Federal, yeah.
Thanks for the corner.
Yeah, the very corner, yeah.
That's true. And thank you for doing that, I really appreciate it. Any else?
Yes.
Okay, great. Um, I have a few things, uh, first, I want to read, I got a phone call this afternoon, which was warmed my heart. It was from Tim Doherty, who's the owner of Doherty Electric. As a kind, actually put it on Facebook, so I'm just gonna read it. Because, you know, it's really easy to criticize the civic. It's very, very easy to say, we don't know what we're doing and we do a bad job. And here we go, as a contractor, I have lots of complaints about selling departments all over the county. But I must say, Lake Worth Beach delivers for me on a consistent basis. From the farm office to the building officials, the inspector, got an electrical permit in three hours. He especially wanted to call out Ashley and um, our Peter Ringel and Matt, our electrical inspector. He said it was, and he said consistently, again, we hear something about it, consistently working with the city has been. Very much easier than a lot of other cities, but the county is, forget it. But I was just glad, it was so nice to get a compliment, even if it wasn't for me, it was for us and it's wonderful. So I wanted to pass it and thank you very much, Mr. Doherty, for taking the time to, to, to make that phone call. Um, the playground at the beach is going up, I don't know if you've noticed it, we've ordered it. And um, I saw they're digging and I see things going up, it's got a shade cover, right? Over it, so um, it took a while to get that. I was promised it three years ago, but we got it going and we're very happy about that. Um, a few of us took a bus trip with Mr., with Commissioner, Panic Commissioner Greg Weiss, the other day, from Tri-Rail to the beach and back. And that's to, you know, just promote ridership and um, you know, you do have the most riders of the Palm Tran um. System in, in Lake Worth. And it was really interesting because it was very air conditioned, it was lovely, the seats were fine and they have wifi. So it was very interesting because a few of our citizens came along with us. And um, Commissioner uh, McBoy was there, who, who else was there? Did you there somewhere? I, nobody else. And, and were you with there? Yeah, no, I'd say, yes, that's like, I, yeah. And um, it was very interesting because, it was funny because the people that normally just rode the bus. They came on the bus and it was like music and people were hitting up beach balls, what's going on? But it was a wonderful, it was good and I, I, I think that we should take the bus more. Um, uh, next was, um, I'm having some more complaints about street prostitution. You know, with Captain Bear and I have been in contact about that. I'm gonna set up a meeting with the State Attorney's Office, because what I hear is that we're not getting the support that we need at first appearances. Um, I, I am familiar with the judge in first appearances and I do have a relationship with Mr. Aronberg. So I'm gonna reach out to him and just say, you know, we, we do the work to bring, you know, to bring the, the women and the men. And we need to have a little more support from that, from, from them as well. Um, and then the next one, we had our first agenda meeting for a while and I was really, it was great. Because a few of us have been a little distracted for a few weeks. And I want to thank everyone, thank you for the opportunity to serve another three years, it's, it's, it's wonderful and I very much appreciate it. Um, but we had an agenda meeting and it was, you know, we started these agenda meetings a couple of years ago because we, let's talk about things that are coming up. You know, it doesn't, throw up the balloon, does it fly, is something we're gonna take? And I think it was, it was a, it was a productive, it was a productive meeting and we all brought things up that we wanted to talk about, yeah. And um, so I want to keep those going, we used to have two a month, I'd like to go back to two a month. But let's see how that, that works out. Um, because it is really, you, you don't understand until you're up here, how you cannot communicate with other people you need to communicate with. So that gives us an opportunity just to say, what about this, what about that? You know, before we, you know, we had discussions in the past about, you know, before we send off staff doing something that we think is interesting. Let's get consensus to send off staff to do something. And I think we're working towards that at this point. Um, and I think we need to do that as a cooperative effort so that we, we don't have people going in all the different directions. There's a concert on Thursday night, the Spring Concert for the Lake Worth High School Band at the high school at seven o'clock. And it's gonna be, they, they play different, the wind instruments do it, they, they mix it up. And it is a, um, it's a wonderful experience and I've been going now for a few years and to see the difference and the improvement. From the, a few years ago to now, it's really, it's very entertaining to go. And it's really, really wonderful to see these kids. Excited and committed and entertaining and just working as a group together in a non-competitive really environment. So if you have nothing to do on Thursday night, seven o'clock at Lake Worth High School, it's five dollars and it's a wonderful experience. I would, I would encourage us all to go. Um, I think that's it. Do you have something else, Ms. Malika?
I do, you had just mentioned the first appearance and a couple of years ago, there was a, a great group of.
They're still doing it, they're still doing it, I'm working with them.
Okay, because we've, it emails about, come up here and just.
I think that's why I'm getting back.
Okay, cool.
Yeah, I know, the, the citizen-driven uh, event. So, now we have our city manager report.
Good evening, everyone. Uh, I will be briefed since tomorrow's eight o'clock and have not reached approval minutes yet. Uh, I will start by saying that um, with an evening of, of many great proclamations. And the, the much deserved kudos to our uh, water utility department. Unfortunate that there is, you mentioned that there is now a Buffalo Bill ban on the dice. So unfortunate, so unfortunate. Um, I will go into um, next. Okay, so a week from uh, tonight on April twenty-third, uh, we have our, our first of two special meetings. Um, I was a little uh, ambitious initially, thinking I could cram it all into one special meeting. And uh, that was quickly changed. So next Tuesday meeting is going to be a financial update from our, our finance director and kind of going over um, sales tax, ARCA. Um, are restricted or funds unrestricted, what projects are currently in, what are out. There's just been a lot of confusion as to where we currently are, what the balances are on all of these. So we're gonna go through that whole process next Tuesday night. Um, also on that is going to be the beach property slash pool RFQ. Um, we are, that scope is currently in draft format. Um, I would not push that out. Thank you for bringing that before everyone to have a conversation. And again, these are uh, special meetings, not workshops. So that gives the public the ability to actually make public comment, um, and not just a regular workshop. So, that will be the meeting for next Tuesday, the second of those special meetings.
What time does that start, Mr. Brown?
Five o'clock, our, our special meetings and workshops will be at five instead of six, that's next Tuesday at five. The second of those meetings will be on May ninth, again at five o'clock. And what we're covering at that meeting, uh, short-term rentals. Artificial turf. And then um, we're gonna have the Tree and Land Skateboard um, come and uh, they, they had put together um, our two scope. Um, if you guys recall, we had a company called Community Green that came a month, a few months ago to talk about um. Uh, you know, the, the tree plantings, like tree giveaways, something like that, because you guys had allocated the fifty thousand dollars for to put toward that. And kind of going back and forth, it made more sense to staff, that's why we wanted to bring it back. Um, to actually put together this RFQ so we get a company on board, so it's not just a one-shot thing. We have this one pot of money and we're gonna, how do, how do we do this adequately? We want to get someone on board for our typical three-year with the, with the ability to do two additional, one year, and so basically a five-year contract. So we're considering, so as we're actually budgeting, every single year, a certain amount of money. We have the same company we're dealing with. Um, so it made a lot more sense, but we, obviously I wanted to push that to the Tree and Land Skateboard. Have them, that's what, that's what they're here for. So, we wanted to have them really involved in this development scope. Um, that's actually the night of their normal meeting. So, this is kind of taking the place of that, but I, I, and, and it's a good time for them to come and, and kind of go through some of the things they've been wanting to do as well. So, um, I'm looking forward to that, but that's gonna be a very packed meeting, I believe. Um, with some of the, but again, that's a special meeting as well, so intentional, so we can actually get public comment on some of these items. Um, we'll also have upstairs city attorney present because on some of these, there are implications depending on how we lean one way or another. So they'll be able to provide um, some advice as far as positive.
I missed you, that was, who's gonna be here?
Our city attorney.
Sam.
Yeah, yeah, cause especially with the short-term rental things, depending on which way we kind of lean. We need to make sure we're all informed in terms of which way we kind of go, what, what implications there may be one way or another. So, again, this is the um, things that have kind of come up back and forth, our paint that's been stacking up. We need to start clearing some of this one way or another, so um.
Bust that too.
Yes, so uh, also, we've got uh, our first budget workshop uh, of the budget season on May fifth, or fifteenth, I'm sorry. Um, which we started at nine o'clock, that's a Wednesday and we're actually doing a, a full day for budget workshop one for the first time, which will be very beneficial for staff. Because that's gonna allow us to really start this off the right way by having a really detailed, in-depth conversation with all of you. To see where exactly our priorities are gonna lie this year and how we kind of start this off. So, this will be the first time we're doing like a full day budget one kickoff. So, uh, with that, I think that's enough. So we can move forward, that's all I have.
You're gonna be busy little.
Excuse me, Madam Mayor, I have a question. In anticipation of these conversations that we're having, is there a way that we can make sure that we have? The TVs working in the hallway overflow rooms available? Because as we saw at last month's planning and zoning and HRPB, when it's of something of major interest, this place gets packed. And I would just like us to be as prepared as possible, that's all.
Yes, ma'am.
Alright, city attorney, you're booked, you have no reports tonight, thank you. We're gonna need some guidance with this Airbnb thing, short-term rental, that's, I mean, it's, ugh. Will. Yes, what?
Sorry, is it a, is it a, are we gonna get some in the back office?
Before then, yeah. Oh, yes.
Figure it out.
Okay, now I only have one card for public participation, not agenda items. Now I see another one picked up. After this, we're gonna take a little.
And I have two, Madam Mayor.
Okay, well, more than I spoke. Um, we're gonna take a little five-minute break before we do, bring up your cards. We're gonna take a little break before we do this, we don't have this for two hours. We need to run.
I'm using it.
I'm.
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 I'm. I'm. I'm. I'm. I'm.
I'm sorry, mayor, I didn't hear you. I still don't hear you. We need the chamber unmuted.
Say it again.
We need the chamber unmuted. Thank you, Valentina.
Oh, she's wonderful. Thank you so much.
I'm sorry, madam mayor, it is eight sixteen and we are still live.
All right, great. Thank you very much. Welcome back, everybody. We are now up to public participation of non agenda items and consent agenda. And first up is Ginny Powell, followed by Richard Stone. On deck is John Lynch, Dr. Lynch.
Ginny Powell, two two four North Palm Way. Um, I would uh, since you made your appointments tonight, I would like to comment on the NA PC. That I'm hoping that we can have those be a little less political. I think some of them are uh very like pep rallies for the preferred candidate. And I understand from talking to some other people that they want to increase their membership. That may be one way to do it. They're supposed to be neighborly and fun. And as you know, I supported uh former Commissioner Stokes. And I don't appreciate going to meetings and feeling like I don't belong. And that is how I feel sometimes. So that is. An NPC meeting? Not NAPC, Neighborhood Association meeting.
Oh.
But I'm hoping if the liaison, that's what the liaison is, they go to the NA PC. Who oversees all the neighborhood associations. Um, I also think it's inappropriate for any sitting commissioner to speak at a commission, at a neighborhood meeting and speak in a derogatory way about any other sitting commissioner or any former commissioners. I hope that um that won't happen. I think that's political and I think it's wrong, especially if that person is not there to defend the comment. In closing, I'd like to um thank Jamie Brown and Public Works. Because Dave passed out the RFQ for the new landscaping contract and it had the scope of work. Uh, it had the um landscaping specifications that we worked on very hard and reviewed constantly. And we think we got it right. And it's now attached to the new RFU, RFQ for the landscaping contract, which has let for five years. So we want to get it right. We think it has some teeth and um let's hope we get some good um people who respond to that.
And we appreciate the work that the tree board does.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Up next, uh, Richard Stone, followed by Dr. Lynch.
Good evening, Richard Stone, four fourteen North Federal Highway. Uh, I just wanted to, speaking on behalf of the Sierra Club Locks Ahachi Group, I wanted to share with the public that um on April twenty fifth, uh, Dr. Mario Mota will be giving a presentation to, it's, it's the April general meeting for the um Locks Ahachi Group. And the public can register online, um, go to sierraclub.org forward slash Florida, forward slash um Locks Ahachi. And he will speak about the detrimental effects of light pollution or artificial light at night.
As he been talk, he's been doing that speech around the county recently, Palm Beach at it, I think.
I, I haven't talked to him about where he spoke. He actually just recently returned from uh Texas where the, um, yeah, for the lights. And um, but he's, he spoke at the, the city utility meeting. And that was, I believe, February twenty seven, Jamie?
That is correct.
Yeah, so if anybody wants to go back and hear his little ten minute presentation, it's definitely worthwhile. This will be a longer, more detailed presentation. He's really quite, um, he was a co-author in one of the most influential studies on um the work, uh, art nighttime shift workers and the effect of uh artificial light on their health.
And tell us again where, when and what time?
Okay, so April twenty fifth, seven thirty. Um, you sign up through the Sierra Club Locks Ahachi Group website, which is sierraclub.org forward slash Florida, forward slash Locks Ah, Locks Ahachi.
And where is it going to be held?
It's Zoom.
Oh, it's Zoom, oh, okay.
So sorry, yeah. I didn't say that, did I? Okay, yeah.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Dr. Lynch? Another beloved veterinarian in our town.
Dr. John Lynch, retired veterinarian. You know, my son's taking over. Like Osborne Animal Clinic, uh, twenty eight oh two Lake Osborne Drive. Uh, I don't know if it's appropriate or not, but the calming curbs on Sixth Avenue South, east of Dixie. Okay, I think they're a disaster. Uh, they were approved years ago. Uh, initially they had trees on every calming curb. Now there's no trees because they've been run over. Okay, now then they, then they put up a reflector sign, which I think there's only one reflector sign left now because they've been run over. Okay, the curbs were painted yellow and I venture to guess they, they're more black than they are yellow now for people hitting those curves. Okay, far as that, so I don't know if there's anything we can do to remove those curves. Cause there's going to be an accident, head-on accident there one of these days because people are going to overcorrect when they hit that curb and go over to the left. Okay, as far as that. And they used to have reflectors on the little yellow. They don't have those there anymore. So it's a disaster waiting to happen and the cities are going to be the ones that's going to be sued. Okay, because they're not being maintained at all. And I think they just should be removed and put it back to the street it was.
I would go further and go to Federal Highway because the ones between Federal and Dixie, I live in that neighborhood, are, I mean, they are pretty.
Disaster, plus they're ugly too, but they just, they're not.
Besides, you're ugly.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good to see you and, and congratulations on your retirement. Eddie, Eddie Albertini, called by Catherine Colmeyer.
Good evening.
Just state your name and your address before you start.
Eddie Albertini, ninety one twenty three Pineville Drive. Pineville Drive.
The Lake Worth here, I'm just, I'm not familiar with. Lake Worth Beach?
It's, no, it's in Lake Worth. Up of Lan, Lantana and line.
Crosswalk.
Right.
Yes.
Right, right, right.
Yep.
Yeah, we have.
Yep.
Okay. I'm a crossing guard and a retired retail designer. And starting the crossing guard job, I realized that some of the children that were crossing uh did not understand the word crosswalk. They, they look down, they, they see white parallel stripes and, and you try to tell them to stay within that crosswalk. It has happened several times and I finally said to myself, then why isn't there a sign that simply says crosswalk? Same way there's ADA signs now uh throughout the city. There are signs that say school. So I find it uh a very simple idea to simply allow the children to understand when they reach that point of the corner um to simply begin to see the word crosswalk. Number one, it's a safety, um, um, not a safety issue, but the eighth, the safety proportion. So that as they reach that point, they could see that sign. In addition, I think the federal whoever's designing the streets, I'm not sure how many years ago, they finally decided to take the yellow. Um, I, I don't know what to call it, but a yellow plate when you step off, off of that sidewalk and you go into the asphalt, every corner has that. So somehow someone determined that when you get to the corner, you have to feel the, the discomfort of, of that tread um that you.
Make anything simple.
Right, so that's on every corner. So again, it's yellow. So imagine if that's yellow and then the stripe on the, on the side as you reach that first one is also yellow. There'll be a connection, a visual connection for children. Number one, there'll be a visual connection for uh vehicular uh traffic when the drivers come and they'll start to see the sign as well as that. And it gives me as a crossing guard, an additional uh tool to use as I'm trying to bring these children across. So for me, this is a point of safety. And I also looked at, that in Palm Beach County, there were increase of accident, pedestrian accidents between twenty twenty two and twenty twenty three, about forty two additional accidents. I'm anticipating in twenty twenty four, between twenty three and twenty twenty four, that um Florida's population has increased. The city population has increased. So the correlation would be, but there may end up also being additional pedestrian accidents. So my proposal is to look at elementary schools as the first test in order to take that first parallel stripe and indicate the word crosswalk. So it will help the pedestrian, the drivers as well as crossing guards.
What school do you work at?
Indian Pines.
Okay, okay. Well, thank, I think, I mean, I, it sounds like a good idea. I think we'll turn it over to staff and do a, we have to budget analysis of what we can afford to do because we're all very budget conscious right now. But it sounds like a great idea, consensus to let the staff look at it.
Yes, and thank you for, for what you do.
Yeah.
Well, thank you. Well, mayor, if, if I could, one other word, um, I believe something like this is proof of concept. It's to find the right location in the right area and begin to get some data. And, and, and prove that, yes, this is helpful in these three conditions, crossing dog, driver, children. And I think once that data is there, then it could begin to grow to other locations and other schools.
Maybe we can do a test school.
Yes.
I think it sounds great. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, now we're up to Catherine Colmeyer. Followed by Todd Townsend, followed by Todd Letts. The Tons. Good evening.
Catherine Colmeyer, five oh three, that's the new sound. Uh, I watched the agenda meeting, the twelve agenda meeting this afternoon. And I just wanted to thank Commissioner Diaz for bringing to the agenda meeting the issue of PFAS. And um the fact that the city has been invited to join the lawsuit um against three energy fund. And I had never heard of PFAS until last week when I happened to read an article in The Guardian, this was really interesting. Which explained how behind the United States is in regulating these chemicals. But um they're very dangerous chemicals, as Commissioner Diaz explained. And um the city is going to have to pay to uh remove them somehow. Also, the fact that the water utility, it has reverse osmosis technology is means like, well, it's ahead of the game. So I just wanted to say thank you very much to Commissioner Diaz for bringing that up at the agenda meeting.
Thank you very much. Todd Townsend. Followed by Todd Letts.
Hi, Todd Townsend, five oh two South J Street. I think it's really.
I think it's really about time that we go ahead and change the name of Dixie Highway. And of course, I have a solution. Let's call it Joiners Highway. We want to join with our communities north and south. Rather than keeping this this Dixie Highway thing going, let's change it up. Joiners Highway, say that a few times to yourself, and I think it'll ring really well. So if you'll excuse me, I've got something I gotta go do.
You go do it. Mr. Velez?
I saw something on Dixie Highway history from nineteen fifteen. I think it's Carl William something or other that he developed the whole length of Dixie, all the way up into Michigan. Any, Todd Velez, five thirty North G. History is kept in a memory bouquet. Every tub sits on the peat it sits on. It does what it does. How well will a plant grow if you keep digging it up? This is our election cycle, which was quite interesting, but a very interesting cycle. The USA's first woman mayor, Iowa Nancy, Iowa Okaloosa, Nancy Smith, eighteen sixty-two, she refused position. I believe they probably had a snake bit. I'm joking, twenty-five year gap for Kansas, Argonia, Kansas. Susanna Salter, eighteen eighty-seven. Lake Worth would have been a twenty-six year gap between Mayor Cortez and Mayor Rachel Waterman. Quote, "The people have spoken," was her quote in the first cycle. And the second cycle was, "The people have the government they deserve, they deserve." Mayor Pam Triolo, quote, "Was I won barely, only by two hundred, two hundred fifty votes." Winner comes from a farmer named Win to toil, to break a sweat. The lose, loss, and lost comes from Louisiana, which means to perish or destroy. No one was, they just elected. Everyone had great numbers. We had forty-two thousand people in the city, I believe it's probably more. And only two thousand voted? Maybe twenty-five hundred, three thousand? Who's responsible would that be? But that's the individuals go out. For a woman to be a mayor, she would be called a consort or a Mr. Mayor S. Consort sounds like a flusy.
That's my husband.
The flusy means blouse and flossy and fluffy, so. But that was what a mayor, a woman could only hope for. Well, century eleven ninety, re-titled from port reef. A reef is an official or beverage. And then to major domus and mayor, which is great or su- superior. God, the Bible has a bayel of as God's angels, but only a few people can do that, right? The Canterbury Tales at the Reef as a shrewd, power-hungry liar. He is very talented in his job and has gained wealth because of it. That's a book. So the point is, there is a a board game, and that would be the hand of God at play always. If Lake Worth had a board game, it would be Haring. And that would be, and the rules would be you'd have to do that in opera, power ballad, rock, rap, however you wanted. As Haring comes from the word, German word, arena, which is town square.
Thank you, that's time.
Thank you, Mr. Lynch. Thank you. Madam Clerk, do you have any public comment?
I have two, Madam Mayor.
Well, let's hear them.
The first is from Sam Smith, one oh nine North Palmway. This is not a comment directed to any of the candidates from the recent election. In fact, I think it's great that there were so many candidates running for mayor, but the multiple candidates caused a runoff election, which has happened many times before. We are not a city that can afford to pay fifty thousand dollars plus every election year to cover the costs of a runoff election. As such, I would suggest that we change the rules or the charter or whatever needs to be changed so that whichever candidate gets the most votes wins regardless of whether anyone gets fifty percent or more of the votes. We should be putting our precious taxpayer dollars into things like filling potholes and fixing sidewalks rather than paying for runoff elections. Thank you. And the second and last comment is from Frank Olafland, seventeen seventy-six, Lake Worth Road. Having conducted your orderly elections, you are ceding our new commission. May I thank the exiting public servant, congratulate the new commission, and wish Mayor Betty Resch and Vice Mayor Chris McFoy that they continue to give us a steady and harmonious governance. We, the Mayan Center, are a team of forty community service workers at three addresses in Lake Worth, the largest NGO in service to this area. A commission that is alert and responsive with members who are keen for the interests of our populace, diverse as America, is essential to the town we serve. At the most divisive American moment since the Civil War, we need the goodwill disposition displayed this year by Mayor Resch and through very many years by Vice Mayor McFoy with Commissioner Friends. This has not always been so. Contentions contention has led not to creativity, but to a level of disorder which exposes city to ridicule. We pray that your purpose and mission be blessed, Mayor. May the confidence of our town in you be rewarded. Vice Mayor McFoy, who has been more affirming through the years than you, Lake Worth has seldom looked more promising than at this seating of the commission. That's the last comment actually that I have online this evening.
Thank you very much. Now we have a consent agenda. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Do I have a second? Second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any names? No, it's unanimous.
I'm sorry, who was the second?
Commissioner May.
Thank you.
Approval of the minutes. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much. New business, agreement with Bausch Enterprises to purchase and install lifeguard towers. Steph?
I'm just here to talk today about the new lifeguard towers. Our lifeguard towers are currently rested and have weathered storms and are past their years of service. And so we would like to move forward with our procurement of the new lifeguard towers, the three new lifeguard towers.
Motion to approve. I just have one question. Uh, do a second?
Second.
Okay, I've got, okay. Where is the, what fund is this coming from? Because I see remaining balance, it's all the, it's unrestricted. Uh, thank you. Unrestricted ARBA funds?
Yeah.
Okay, great, thank you. Okay, two hundred and three thousand, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Very good, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Can I just ask you, sorry, can I just ask you a question? What are you going to do with the old ones?
Yeah. They're going to be removed. Jay, do you know what we would do with the the old ones?
Uh, yeah, actually, Chief, Doug Yocum got me the day. We got a really big price for someone to actually remove those, demo them, and haul them off for us. Um, because we were looking at having possibly go to the south. So it was a very cheap.
They couldn't be reused in any way. They're falling apart.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, all right. So, no, somebody asked me that. They were like, couldn't it be made into like a playground?
Yeah, there was some questions about that, but yeah.
Okay, all right.
Any storm.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Up next is ratification of the emergency procurement with Musco Sports Lighting LLC for the removal of the dangerous baseball field lighting at Dave Masco Field. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Would you like to say something, Mr. Brown?
Uh, yes, I will. So this is kind of retroactive. We had to to move on this very quickly. About a half ago because of the the danger. Um, so this is kind of coming to you after the fact. We we could not wait until this particular meeting in order to to get this done. So I had to use the city manager pen to move forward with this. We do have obviously an agreement with Palm Beach County for the use of that field. Their last home game is on the twenty-second, so we kind of had to move quickly because we do have an obligation to provide that field for for them to play their games on.
State manager, just for clarification for folks out there, the lights are actually fallen.
Yeah, we had two that actually had fallen just because they're well beyond their their life. And it is part of the budget process, you will see CIP an item to for the actual placement of the lights. So that'd be a conversation we have to have during during that process. Uh, now this was for the sixty-two five. Given the time that it took them to actually get it down, it appears it's going to be cheaper than that by twenty thousand or so. So.
Good numbers.
So if possible, on this motion, if we need to do a not to exceed the sixty-two five, it will be less than that. I just don't have the exact.
Okay, who made the motion?
Mr. Diaz.
I did, yeah, I'll change it to not to exceed sixty-five.
Good, you're a gentleman. Second. Uh, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great.
I did have a quick question on that, though.
I'll turn it to your line.
Because that field fits high school and we're finishing out the season, but like, uh, do you have an update on like future use? Like, can we accommodate them?
Yeah, so we have an agreement that is due to be updated this year. Uh, we've already gotten the draft from them, and this was just, uh, the current agreement with the school board was for this this season only. The next one, they're looking to do a five-year. So that'll obviously be coming forward in the coming months as far as how we want to structure that. Um, depending on in the budget process, if we want to invest in redoing the lighting on that field or not, that would have to be part of that agreement because if we decide that's not the direction we want to go in, there obviously can't be night games. And depending on the games that kind of fall before we hit the daylight savings time, we all know they're around a little after five, but it starts getting getting dark. So when their games are at four and five and things, that would obviously have a big impact on on what we're able to do on that field. So again, that'll be a discussion during the budget process. But the main thing was just getting the existing ones down so they could finish out the season, and then we'll have that conversation to move forward.
Yeah, along with that conversation that I'd like to, for us to have a conversation about the whole of Northwest football fields they use. I know that there's soccer games all year, all all weekend long. And I've had some comments, which I think are great, but I've had comments that they're leaving their garbage behind, they're leaving the trash behind. And I would like, I don't know how we would address that, I don't know who they are, but at some point, I think we need to talk about what are we going to do with that area, the whole area? Mr. McFoy?
It's part of that, well, I'm sorry. Okay. Uh, I was gonna say, as part of that conversation, we we want to make sure that we, um, and we actually had Chris Moore down as well, looking at what leagues, like, how how much use are we getting on not just the quad fields or south of twenty-second, but also on Manzo itself? Um, to see how much use are we seeing in how many different leagues or in year round? So that'll be part of the conversation as well.
And we still have the girls' beach volleyball that wants to get a.
There's a lot of people that want use of that area up there, so.
So we're going to talk about it.
Lot, lot, lot of conversation.
After we finish arguing, we're paid to use Airbnbs. We'll just take it on.
Great, I'm a plug to open area study. Comments for that would be really helpful.
Yeah. Mr. McFoy?
Uh, thank you. Just in relation to your comment, Madam Mayor, I did go by twice actually those fields, I think that you were referring to, east of the baseball field. And.
North, north.
The north, north of twenty-second and east of the north baseball field. And it did look like there was a lot of soccer activity there. I was struck after they had left, because I haven't gone by again, by a huge quantity of garbage bags that they had filled up for them. I, I didn't like, there was still some stuff on the ground, but they, you know, I wouldn't be surprised if it was fifty to a hundred garbage bags that they had filled up. So they cleaned up.
And left there.
Well, they didn't have a way to move.
They're not paying to use the field, though. Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I've had quite a few, I mean, that's, I'm glad to hear that, but I've heard quite a few complaints about it up there. They're going, I think it's great that they use it, there's obviously people on play, but maybe we should, I don't know, figure out something because it's it's a problem with that. Fifty bags of garbage. I mean, how are we supposed to get that? I mean, where is that on the schedule? Ms. May?
Just quickly, when somebody is using a field without having permission to do so, what happens if somebody gets hurt?
So this has kind of been an issue in the past where, you know, we will lock fields and stuff up, but fences get cut sometimes, you know, it's not one of those things that, you know, we we can do as as much we can. But when someone wants to access something, there's always a way that they're going to access it. So from the city side of things, we just have to make sure that, um, kind of like when when we had to close Manzo to do this, once we realized there was an issue and we had to address it immediately, we locked everything up. We put barricades and the fencing and everything around like the actual poles. We did everything from the city standpoint that when you looked at it visually, it was very obvious, I shouldn't be on this field. Obviously, if you want to climb the fence or you want to try to get in there, people are going to do whatever they're going to do. But from our side, we need to make sure that just from a liability standpoint, we're doing everything we can to say, you should not be here. So at least we're we're kind of covering on that, but.
We don't have anything on the north side that gives that message, correct?
Did, I was given an excuse for the field. So the the issue that we have sometimes, especially, especially like Howard and stuff like that, is that you do have these kind of pop-up leagues that kind of come on the weekends. We need to find a better way to address that because if you've seen one of those games going on, it's a lot of people.
It's a lot of people.
That are not currently paying to do that.
And they're destroying the fields, they're destroying the footsaw courts.
Correct.
So that's why we need park grants for the locals. The footsaw, which is for the soccer fields.
Yeah, so we need a better way to kind of police that. Um, because as I'm saying, you know, there is a liability there. But when we have leagues, there are contracts and agreements in place and everything, yeah, exactly. Um, that's obviously not the case when we have these pop-ups. So, um, yeah, we, that is one thing we do need to work on and see how we're going to actually address these when they kind of pop up on weekends.
Okay, great, love you. Next up, agree, new business C, agreement with Stanton Consulting Services for comprehensive sustainability analysis for the city for the fiscal year twenty twenty-five budget, not to exceed hundred and thirty-eight thousand, two hundred and seventy-nine dollars. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Do you want to say something? Or you, no, 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 you're good, okay. All in favor? Liberty is the soul of discretion. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, who passes unanimously. Next up, D, agreement with Davincourt Company LLC to provide comprehensive financial advisory services. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Last but not least, discussion of the impact of the subregional force man break on Florida Mango Road. Make them pay, yeah. Send the bill to AT&amp;T. Oh, here he comes. Mr. Money.
Jimmy, Jimmy will take the wheel, man.
Um, so as we've discussed earlier on tonight, we're all now very familiar with what happened last week as far as the force man. Um, obviously, the the main thing off the bat was to to get this slowed down and stopped so we could actually start to repair. Um, now, kind of on the back end, as we're we're in the repair side of things, the financial part comes up because, you know, it, even though it was a, you know, that that pipe runs out to the ECR and multiple municipalities utilize that pipe, at that point, it's still our pipe, which is why we were trying to be first on the scene where it was our responsibility to do it. Now you've got AT&amp;T, you've got their main subcontractor, and then you have the subcontracting subcontractor. So there are three entities there. Shockingly, it's one of these things where they're kind of all pointing one way or another. Um, on the other end, all of these, you know, so it was, as we mentioned, a twenty-four hour day operation with all these factors have been running. Those bills are start rolling in pretty soon here because of all of that work that was done and is still being done. People are getting paid for all that. So we had a conversation yesterday at Dav before, we're trying to figure out on our end. And this has kind of been a working thing, which is why this was a last minute addition to this agenda. How do we start to address this, that these bills start rolling in? Uh, if I had to take a shot in the dark, I would assume this might be a very lengthy legal process when it comes down to who's going to be paying what. I know that we will get reimbursed at some point in time. The question is just how long is that one time? And what do we do in the meantime? Because the frustrating part for us, obviously, you guys have already put it together. Um, we weren't the ones who hit the pipe. We were the ones who responded and got to work fixing the pipe and resolving the situation, um, which isn't really fair that it now bears, uh, it kind of falls on us.
It's not our fault, but it's our problem.
Yeah, so I have obviously been in contact with county in in top on layer in there and kind of going back and forth, kind of see what options we may may have. Um, the county did not, obviously, there was no state emergency, it wasn't large enough to constitute that. We had to pull additional resources. Um, so it's not going to trigger anything as far as admission number, which is typically what would be submitted from the county POC up to the state level, would allow us to then get on the upfront to kind of pay. Wouldn't possibly be doing now, it's waiting to get reversed on the back end. That did not carry that either, so that was not submitted for actual mission number to to state level. So we are kind of scrambling right now, and this is what I'm going to hand it over to Yannick to discuss the the fancy financial part of this.
Yes, for the record, Yannick and I are finance director. Uh, so when we, when I was informed of the financial magnitude of this, uh, result this issue, it's pretty much equivalent to, I would say, category four or five type of hurricane. So we're talking about a range of ten to fifteen million dollars, which we do not readily available. So that's why we. So that's why, uh, we talked to our financial advisors and they had, uh, we were already planning to issue until about, uh, the next few months. So they were recommending having a resolution that would allow us to reimburse ourselves. Uh, whatever that cost may be, we don't know yet. This, this is just a range, um, until, you know, until we get a reimbursement.
And the one thing I did not mention was, um, so just to date, just based on, um, you know, the labor, um, and, and everything that's happened out there, even the, the equipment, everything. I mean, we had two line stops who dropped in with four hundred thousand dollars. So just going line stops alone, we
Line stop?
Yeah, that's what we had actually dropped in to do the bypass.
And they're four hundred thousand dollars?
Uh-huh. Yeah, they are not cheap. Target does not carry those. Um, I do not check on.
Amazon.
So, um, so, so we're, we're looking in the eight, ten million dollar range already. Um, the, the reason that we're looking on here is that a fifteen million is because as, as Director Hedy mentioned before, we're now starting to search for the actual location of the break now that we have the bypass in place, but depending on once we uncover that, what that looks like, whether we can actually do a point repair there versus have to replace that entire thing. That's a five million dollar swing. So if we're looking at any kind of that ten million dollar range now, if we have to replace that entire thing, that's, like I said, a very large swing depending on the actual repair itself. So it made sense to look at the fifteen million dollar number. And yes, the look you have now is what we
That's a lot of money. I mean, and I mean, so it's gonna be, so AT&amp;T is saying our subcontractor, subcontractor saying our sub subcontractor did it. So we're gonna, they're gonna fight it out.
It gets early in the process and, uh, obviously we're still out there working, resolving everything right now. Um, but we are starting that, that process now and making sure that we're, you know, at least getting letters and stuff together to kind of notice people. It would be great if they just said, we understand.
Yeah, we did.
On us, we'll go ahead and pay whatever this is.
Yeah.
And then fight it out among, you know, our sub and, and their sub and everything. Would that ever happen? I, I'm very skeptical. That's how it's gonna work out, but, um, just to make sure we're covering ourselves, because this was a, what, thirty to forty-five day process that we moved forward with something like that. So again, this is why this was kind of thrown on now, because we really need to start this process if this is gonna be the, the wrong day.
And we don't have ten million dollars for two million light in reserve flying around.
We could, but if you look at the timing, you know, we got the payment around the corner. I could, I could find savings here and there and use fund balance, but then we have a, you know, an interesting season coming around.
No, it's not, it's not, no.
I would not want to.
Okay, so what do you want us to do?
So, uh, uh, we have Davenport, our financial advisors, uh, to join the call in the meeting.
Hmm.
Uh, Kyle, you might, do you want to speak on, on a short-term solution?
Good evening. Is it standing?
Stand, oh, no.
Evening. Davenport.
Good afternoon. Good evening, sir, and welcome to our meeting.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the commission. Kyle Lauk's here. Um, we've, uh, we've met and talked, uh, over the years and Joe Mason is on as well with me. So, um, to, to Yannick's point there and, and listening closely, we've been talking with your staff and, um, I'll pause there. Just, can everybody hear me? I was
Yes, yeah, we can.
Okay, very good, thank you. Um, been working very closely with, uh, last week with, um, with your staff in terms of the evolving situation here that obviously is a, is a challenge. I think as, as Yannick mentioned there, um, very preliminary estimates that have been given to us and that, you know, could be ten to fifteen million dollar range, uh, very, very preliminary, um, in terms of the cost. Um, I think in terms of order of magnitude, Yannick, you were thinking maybe there's only four million dollars in the sewer fund itself. Um, and so our, our goal here is to make sure you as a city from a fiscal sustainability standpoint have access to dollars such that you're not having to drain your other important reserves um, to fix this problem that obviously will be, you know, sort of worked through and probably litigated over some, uh, time period that, that is, you know, beyond our, our knowledge today. So the thought process is in a, in an expedited way. Um, as Mr. Brown said, over about the next thirty, forty-five days, uh, we'd be working to go out and solicit, uh, proposals from lending institutions that could be banks, um, that could be underwriters. You as a city have used both of those options in the past. Um, we will go out and solicit those bids and information and bring that back to you. Um, first to your staff, working through your legal counsel and bond counsel. Um, all with the goal of having a, what we call an interim financing put in place. So the, the number that's been talked about is about fifteen million dollars as a not to exceed. Um, that would, uh, again, give you access to short-term financing. What we mean by that is probably in the two-year range that it give you uh, about two years to work through whatever process is going to be worked through, um, in terms of having to pay for the work that's been done, uh, certainly on a twenty-four, seven basis over the last week. And then likely work with, uh, you know, the AT&amp;Ts and the other contractors over whatever time period we expect. Or we're not lawyers, that's probably gonna take a while. So give yourself as a city, uh, probably in that, in that two-year range. Hopefully it works out faster than that. Um, but give you flexibility, uh, to, um, again, have those funds and not have to go drain the other critical resources of the city, um, meaning those reserves. So we'd go out, we'd do that, we'd solicit those proposals, be back to you, um, in the May timeframe, uh, with the results of that at a commission meeting. Um, Joe and I would anticipate being there in person to kind of talk through all that, working with your legal counsel and be able to tell you the interest rates, the terms and provisions, et cetera, and how that kind of fits into the overall, uh, financial profile of, of the city. So, so Mayor, hopefully that's helpful. We know it's a, it's a difficult situation, a surprise for everyone. But the ultimate goal here is to, to make sure that you're safeguarding the, uh, overall finances of the city. Um, because again, the numbers that have been discussed with us are, are very large relative to the size and scope of your city.
That's true.
And the idea would be to first provide the funding to get the project fixed. Get, get the line fixed and then buy yourself some time to negotiate those reimbursement agreements with the AT&amp;Ts, their subs, their subs to subs and your regional partners that also share in and benefit in the use of that line. So, um, unfortunately, there's got to be, there's got to be a lead entity that, uh, you know, sort of takes charge and, and funds this repair upfront. And since it's in your territory, your service territory, um, unfortunately, that, that turns out to be the city. But we, in all regards, wish to protect the city and make sure that you get reimbursed along the way. So that you're not carrying the burden of this entire break.
I'm sure there's gonna be attorney's fees involved. It's one for us to defend ourselves.
And I think the attorney's fees and the interest costs of the borrowing to fix the problem, those should all be part of the negotiations in terms of any future payment flows, reimbursement flows back to the city.
I mean, the good news is eventually, I mean, I try to look on the bright side. At some point, we will get reimbursed. I mean, this is a crisis that we're dealing with, but at some point, we'll get the money back. She says optimistically. Um, Mr. Deon, your light was on first.
Um, you actually kind of half-assed it and answered it. Is, um, you asked, asked.
Normal, but not so real.
No, you, you already kind of asked it. You know, we have a pathway to getting paid. Best case scenario, we get admission number. Hopefully we get reimbursed as invoices come in. But my question was against, um, you know, AT&amp;T and the contractors are gonna fight it out. So if we, that's kind of what I expect to happen. And if we get roped into that, my question was, you know, do we have insurance to cover the litigation costs in the meantime? It's just after impact. Okay.
Um, Jimmy, was, uh, was plan put on total insurance, um, above going?
Yes. Yeah, so, um, we obviously have some, our staff in tomorrow morning and
Okay.
We have much to discuss.
Okay.
So.
Mr. Malaga was next, and then Mr. McFoy.
Thank you. Um, that's actually funny. I, I wrote down interest on the bond. Regional and a local responsibility. Who's, who's gonna have that conversation? Are we gonna have to, to bear the brunt of it because it's our line? And then my other question is, was this line set for future improvements in three to five, seven years from now? Was it part of the capital improvement? Was it something that might have needed to be repaired down the road?
No, so, so everything you're asking, again, this is kind of an ongoing situation. Um, but we already had, uh, you know, our attorneys looking into the agreement with our subregional partners, how this is gonna work? Can this be kind of dispersed out as the divorces are coming in? All of that stuff we're currently dealing with.
Well, I'm, I'm a hundred percent in favor of going out to bond versus using any rework that we have. Um, because we already know the kind of things that we have to deal with and we do have to deal with FEMA. Um, so it's not like they're one of our best friends. Um, so I, I think that, I mean, I'm in favor of going out and finding out what we can do. Again, like the mayor says, it's not our fault, but it is definitely our problem. Um, so who happens? At a high rate of speed.
Uh, Mr. McFoy?
Uh, thank you. Some of them have already been mentioned. Is there any way that we can get something on record that whoever is ultimately held responsible, once they sort that out in one of themselves, that they are responsible for all of our costs, including the bond interest legal fees?
Yeah, so again, that, that is the conversation we're having with our, with our city attorney. I'll come make sure we're getting the
The other one is, we do have an attorney on our board here. I don't know what her professional opinion is, but my scientific, very unprofessional opinion is two years sounds optimistic to me to get this resolved. I would be inclined to get any opinions we can get from the legal world is too optimistic, too, the number too, too optimistic with. Uh, should we make this bond for a longer period? What's our best estimate? And the other side is, suppose we get lucky, knock on wood, and the costs are lower. Can we pay back some of the bond early?
Yes.
Yes.
No creep payment, no tease, just like my mortgage.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, those are my questions.
And I, I think two years is a, is a rosy outlook as well.
Seems rosy to me.
Again, we, we, it's still in the preliminary stages, but we're still out there fixing, so we don't even really know yet what those three entities are going to do or what they may or may not do. So again, we, we don't know yet. It's still very early in this process.
And it, but in general, I agree with the, the view of, um, let's not use our reserves for a problem that we didn't make and we need those reserves.
We do.
Okay, so do you need any guidance from us? Any consensus? Just go forth, go forth and
Yeah, to go forward with a short-term solution.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, we have no choice. It's, it's a terrible thing to happen. I mean, again, thank you to staff for dealing with it so efficiently and quickly and wonderfully. It just, it's a visited a, a bad thing visited upon us. So, okay, so, uh, do I have a motion? No, no, you're, you're, all in favor?
Aye.